February 5th, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join me, join us. I'm excited to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Thank you, welcome. We have a scheduled appointment at 7:00. State Senator Dylan Fernandez, State Representative Kathleen Lanatra, and State Representative Kenneth Suesi are here for a legislative update. We would love to see you. Just as a note, Kathy Lanatra did have to cancel coming tonight, and she will come at a later date. Welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you. It's great to be with you guys. Kathy's husband had brain surgery, so she's with him, and, you know, she really wishes she could, she could be here. It's an honor to be before you, especially early on in my tenure as state senator for this district. You know, this is a really important town to me. My staff is here as well. Legislative director and chief of staff know that we're here to be accessible to anyone in the town, but especially the select board, and we want to be, you know, serve as your voice at the State House and do what's best for this really unique community. So, we can get into like a few different issues, but before we do, I don't know if, Ken, you want to say something?
Yeah, I know I have some frequent flyer miles here in this room at meetings, so I've been before you guys before, but, you know, similarly, you know, getting the first five weeks up there, although, you know, Senator is not new to the building, you know, we're both new to our roles here, so I'm excited to, you know, get more permanent digs in the State House, if you will, but we are still just as available and just as ready to get to work as we all, both already, but all three of us as well have already been doing. So, I'm sure by the end, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, office hours, office contact info and stuff, so that everybody who's either watching or here in the room can, can get ahold of us. That's probably at least a majority of our job is just constituent services, one-to-one reach out, but we want to make sure we address stuff with you guys tonight specifically, so.
Yeah, so, a few things, you know, just, this is my first time before you. Anything you guys need when it comes to grant funding or any type of application that the town is putting forward, please reach out to, to, to me, to Ken and Kathy, or just one of us, and we'll all coordinate in doing a letter of support to the administration, whatever agency that is, making phone calls, you know, that can all help to bring money back to the town. And I know that's something you guys really care about, so please don't be shy about reaching out to us about, about that. You know, I know there's some home rule petitions that the town has, has put forward, and, and as they come up, you know, let us know about it. I know Ken's already filed them. We'll cosponsor Ken's, Ken's bills, and, you know, but we're also happy to take off some of that burden too, and, and file some on the Senate side as well. They both go through similar, similar tracks. Generally, home rule petitions are, are pretty, pretty easy to get through, but, but sometimes they, they take a bit of time, so if there's, if there's anything that is really time-sensitive around a home rule petition, definitely flag that, for me, flag that for us. Some of them have, have deadlines based on elections that, that need to certify them in town, or whatever the issue may be, so if there's some kind of time constraint to it, you know, please, please, please let us know. There's a couple of things that, you know, we'll, we'll see what's going to come up in this legislative session. A couple of things we know that are going to come up that I think is important for the town. One big one is, that we're taking up is around the Chapter 70 Funding Formula, so the local reimbursement for schools. So, you know, we're making an effort, we've, we're doing listening sessions in all eight towns in this district. We're also making an effort to meet with all the town managers in the district, and I know we're getting something set up. We also want to make an effort to meet with all the, the school committees, and we've, we've had, and superintendents as well, along with the select boards, because we want to understand exactly how the Chapter 70 formula can be tweaked to best help the town of Pembroke to make sure that you're getting more local aid for your schools. I know there's a lot of school districts in this, in our area, that, that really need that extra funding, and the costs have, have been increasing there. So, that's one of the bright spots in the budget. The other thing you'll see is around transportation funding. There's some bright spots there. The governor's put forward a proposal to give more money to towns around this, and on a longer timeline, too, so more time for planning. The more money piece, you know, we're going to be, I think that has a, a good shot on going through this in terms of Chapter 90 funding, local aid on the, on the transportation piece. Environmental bond bill's going to be coming up this session as well, so if there's anything particular to the town around that, let us know. That's a vehicle that we know is going to be moving, and so, just something to, to be thinking about. And then, the, the governor's filed a local, a municipal bill that you may have seen. Town of Plymouth reached out to us around supporting it, but looking to, to hear from all the towns on whether they think it's a good thing or, or, or a bad thing, on giving, basically empowering towns with more, more tools in their toolbox to, to address local issues, but, so I assume it would be helpful, but you guys let me know, and I would never assume that, that it is. So, those are just some kind of top-level things. As we're very, very early in the session, committees haven't even been appointed yet, but we're looking forward to that process. And then, if any of the 6,000 bills that gets filed, or one that you're particularly supportive of or concerned of, please flag that. You know, on the, on the Senate side, I'm not sure what community I'll, I'll be chairing, but I'll be chairing a committee, so particularly if there's a bill in, in front of my committee that you care about, you know, let me know, and then really any bill that's filed, please don't hesitate to reach out. That's, that's kind of some top-level stuff. Do you have anything else you want to share?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, just on a couple of the issues you talked about, stuff that I filed specifically as well in those categories, Chapter 70 is obviously a priority for every municipality. I was a little, I'd say disappointed with the lack of information that DESI had about ways to help us change that. I know that's going to be something that is going to go throughout the budget process and wasn't something that there was a lot of will for to, to file in the first two weeks of the session, so one piece that I put forward was to study a couple of different things about the formula itself, and basically mandate an advisory committee to be formed through DESI to investigate. One was the inflation cap, which for those that don't know, there's a 4.5% inflation cap that's built into the formula. Obviously, that's something that doesn't, I'd say typically come up, but that we've seen a lot of in the last four to five years, and COVID really, really dug into the funds that municipalities were getting because of the inflation we saw in 2021, 22, et cetera. So, that's one specific area, just in, in what people are trying to look at overall in the formula as well, is, and there's a handful of other things specifically. We filed 26 bills out of our office. I encourage everybody, all this stuff is public information. To the Senator's point, is, if you find anything that's of note to you, all of this is available on the legislature's website. I've got stuff on social, I know Dylan does as well, so plenty of ways to dig into what is out there in front of the legislature so far and, and what's been filed, so. And as well, so one of them was a home rule. The other bill that we filed that Rep Lanatra is on as well, I wanted to mention, is in support of some work from the Pembroke Historical Society, which I know there's members on the board and members in the audience, so just basically acknowledging some suffragettes that was, that lived in town that were a big part of the movement and, and worked with Susan B. Anthony back in the day, so we wanted to make sure that we got that done and over the finish line, and something that former Rep Cutler had started, that we're going to make sure we, we finish out. So, just a couple of note from the big categories and from Pembroke as well, so.
And then, one other thing I wanted to mention that we've been a bit involved in, that I'm concerned about, is the closure of the Papa's Children's Mental Health Hospital. I know it's not in town, but it's in the region. That's something that I'm pushing back against, and then there's another closure of 16 inpatient mental health beds in Cassett and Mashpee in our Senate District, not here, but has implications for Pembroke, because the nearest beds, that, that, the nearest accessible beds, if that closes, is, is Pembroke, is the hospital here. So, I have concerns about the availability of mental health services in our, in our region. We're working with a whole host of different organizations, really pushback against this. If anything, I think the state needs to be more supportive of mental health, particularly for children, but really for, for everyone. And, you know, although it's not in town, it will have some, some impacts to the Pembroke community, because it's, it's, one, it's regional, and then, two, you guys actually have the largest concentration of beds here in town. So, you know, if you're, if you're interested in being involved in that, please let us know. And, and, you know, to people watching at home, I just say, you know, and, and everyone here, you know, feel free to reach out to our office anytime. My contact information's just on the Mass Legislature website. You can email me directly, and then you can call our office anytime as well. We like to be responsive, we like to be helpful. Even if it doesn't involve the state, we can generally connect people with federal resources, municipal resources, whatever the issue, the issue is. And we've done, you know, I, I served in the House for eight years. We do a lot to connect people with services, whether that's healthcare, or unemployment, or what have you, that, that, that they're entitled to, but sometimes they, navigating a state agency can be, can be a challenge, as we've all experienced at one, one point or another in our lives. So, with that, I'd just say thank you for, for having us. It's an honor to serve this town, and I hope you think of, of us as, as, as partners with whatever you need.
Thank you. Regarding those mental health facilities, do you know why they were closing? Was it, was it staffing, or?
Yeah, so, we've gotten several different reasons, particularly to the, the closure in our district. This is a facility that has downsized a bit. It used to offer different services that weren't inpatient. Those services had a higher reimbursement rate than inpatient, and so when they took those away, it made the facility less financially sound. I don't think that's a good argument, because they're the ones who made that decision to make it less financially sound, and, you know, look, I mean, this is a region that I think's, you know, one, overlooked too often by the state, and then, two, a region that has really acute mental health needs, and sometimes getting that, that access to beds can be a real challenge. And so, I, I, you know, even if it's just 16 beds, I, I want to keep them, keep them open.
Very difficult to come by. Did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, some questions, comments. Number one, thank you guys both for coming. Unfortunately, Kathy couldn't come, totally understandable. Hopefully, we can see her at a later date. So, again, thank you guys both. I'm really excited about some of the bipartisanship that you guys are talking about, too, with regards to especially, you know, Chapter 70, Chapter 90 funding. Those are, I think, bipartisan issues, regardless of whether you're on this side or that side, et cetera. That's something that really affects everybody across the board, and some of these funding formulas for Chapter 70 have been a real struggle for Pembroke and some of the surrounding towns. For Chapter 90, same kind of idea, but, you know, what we've seen is that, you could say very simply the same thing with the Chapter 70, they're not keeping up with inflation. You know, towns are limited by Prop 2 and 1/2, of course, as you know, and so, because of that, inflation outpacing everything with what we've seen in recent years has really made that tough. So, very happy to hear that you guys are taking on Chapter 70, Chapter 90 funding a bit. Two big items that are really things that people are talking a lot about right now, that I think are also bipartisan issues, that I hope come up in the legislature, things maybe you guys can team up on that could certainly help us with, VOTEC. VOTEC is a big conversation right now. It's, funding it, having access to it is very difficult. There's some state impediments that are involved. Obviously, there's financial impediments as well. There's a lot of discussion on South Shore VOTEC, you know, whether we go in that direction or not. We're going to get more information on that soon, which will be really helpful. Right now, in the area, for something like South Shore VOTEC, they're kind of really the only one, which, you know, a little more choice might be helpful, too. So, what that means, I don't know the answer to all those questions, but those are some struggles that we're having. The other one is there's some discussions about water infrastructure. One thing that I could say tied to that, that we really needed some more help from our legislators on, and it would be a great project to take on, another bipartisan issue, is this Brockton Water Agreement that's been around for about 125 years. So, this is something that I think cuts across lines, I think, and they, they have access to resources here in town that they need access to, and nobody, I think, wants to stop that, but with some of the financial incentive structures that are in play, you know, they're able to use the water and then sell it to surrounding towns, and we have very real water infrastructure needs here. So, if there's some way that that agreement could be revisited in a way that is a little more equitable for some of the stakeholders involved, I think that would be really helpful for everyone. And again, that would be a huge bipartisan win.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for that. I, a few things. One, we do want to really understand from the town, too, and, and talk to the folks kind of steeped in the Chapter 70 issues, like what buckets are most helpful to get a bump up, so that we can then advocate for them, and so you get higher reimbursement rates. Anything that comes before the SRF fund, you know, let us know. We're happy to push on that. Generally, that's been a very successful program around water quality in the state. If there's specific projects, we could put something in there for the environmental bond bill. That's probably going to come up around this time next year, so a little time to think about that, but let us know, and we're happy to file some amendments around that. Last session, we did pass the largest tax relief bill in 25 years. A part of that was a tripling of the septic tax credit. Waste water, not drinking water, but water. That's new, though, and, and I don't know if people are fully aware of it. Used to be able to get $6,000 back, tripled it to $18,000 back for a tax rebate for, for septic systems. I imagine you guys have a lot of septic systems, so.
We don't have two of them.
Right, so, so I think this is really important for the, for this town. Know, too, that we're working on legislation around that to make it more accessible for, for people who don't have the income that they would need to get the tax rebate. So, we're working on some, so we're talking about senior citizens, really low-income folks who don't have the tax liability to get it back on their taxes. We're working on some legislation right now, and I actually think that's within the, the intent of the tax release, the tax relief piece that we passed. And then, I, we really want to, we're really interested in this Brockton issue. I smiling looked at our legislative director in the back, because he's already been tasked with taking a, a, a deep dive into it, and, you know, we're aware of the, the two pieces of statute on, on the books currently, and we would love to connect with someone in town that might be able to talk us through, like really get granular on this, so that we might be able to put forward something that's beneficial for Pembroke. So, I'm, I'm really interested in this issue. Know that's something our office, you know, we've only been around here, we're in office for four weeks, but this is already something that we're doing a little research on, and then we'll connect with the town manager and, and others around, really get into the details.
I'll add, too, and it's not just a Pembroke issue, too. There's a number of towns that surround Silver Lake, so.
Well, to that point, there was actually legislation that was filed, I was just going to add, that I cosponsored as well, that Rep Lanatra introduced. That kind of upstream from the issue, if you want to say, is actually specifically deals with the flow in and out of Silver Lake. So, that could potentially be a route that, that kind of limits, you know, what happens that way. I know that might not address, or, or go in the direction that we might be looking, that, that this agreement could be amended to, you know, a proper place, but, but that's another issue, and I think Rep Lanatra kind of surrounds the entire lake with, with her communities as well, so we're looking at it from that direction as well.
Awesome.
For the folks at home, the, the two pieces of legislation that you mentioned, one was 1899, and the second was 1964, that allowed Brockton to take Silver Lake's water. There's a lot more to say besides that, but that's where it began.
And, and don't forget that Brockton isn't the only community that takes water from the town of Pembroke. Abington and Rockland do also.
Has there been any discussion about anything to do with VOTEC?
Yeah, so, we've, we've funded it. We funded vocational schools at a significantly higher level in recent years. It's actually a really good time for this, and, and I think the state recognizes that, like, this is, this is a great option for kids who can go get a high school degree and immediately be ma, enter the workforce, making really good money. So, you know, I think this is another thing that will come up in the education debate around Chapter 70 and the like, but this is actually one of the, the bright spots of the state budget, is the amount of money for, for education funding. So, now is actually a, a good time to be thinking about how we can, we can tweak things to help out the town, and I know the town's considering, you know, whether they want to be a, a, a part of the, the, the school or not. You know, I know that's more of a municipal decision, but from the state side, we, we have been putting a lot more money in there, into our, our VOTEC schools than in the past.
Well, I think the concern is that we can't afford it. Everybody would like access, but it's a matter of paying for it.
Or that even with growing demands, that there'll still be limited seats available, even with the addition, so there's a number of moving parts there, for sure.
Yeah.
It's a good conversation to have.
Well, we should, yeah, we should, we should dig into that.
No.
Anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
So, I'd like to poll both of you to find out what your stance is on a state auditor, auditing the legislature. It's, as you know, the voters voted for it, over 70% of the electorate voted to allow the auditor to audit the legislature, and it's being fought to the nail, what's your stance?
Well, I voted for it, too, you know, so I'm one of those voters, I supported it. The, the fight right now is between who does the audit, and I personally think it should be an independent auditor. If you get into a scenario where one politician's auditing other politicians, you're just, well, I, I feel like most people would understand that scenario, but maybe things would just get political rather than an actual nuts and bolts, here's how you can improve things in a, a more objective manner. And so, yeah, I'm fully supportive of an audit. I voted for it, I advocated for it. I do think it, it, it should be an independent auditor who, who does it, and I think that's, that's my understanding of where it is, or where the, the back and forth is now.
Yeah, I, I campaigned very supportive for it as well, talked about it during all of our forums and voted for it as well, so I'm fully on board for auditing the legislature.
Very good. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in it, because I appreciate you folks coming here, and I appreciate all the, the humans' work that you're going to do for us with all the petitions we're going to have for you through the years, but the, the state only has one bucket of money, and if the, the money is being spent unwisely, that limits what we're getting here, whether it's Chapter 70, Chapter 90 money. So, you know, there was a saying that's been hinted about the news this week, that it's not a worm in an apple, it's a bowl full of worms, and that's what I'm worried about at the State, State House. So, I really don't care who does the audit, let's get an audit done.
Yeah, so, all state agencies are already under the purview, already get audited. It's a mandate, like they all do. So, 99.9% of the state budget is ought under, goes to state agencies and is, you know, under an audit that happens regularly. I do agree, though, that, you know, or as well, that, you know, there needs to be more transparency there. The Senate's put forward a bunch of proposals on this, in our, in our rules around making committee votes public to everyone, making sure all testimony, written or in person, is, is public to people, making sure there's more time available for notice for public hearings and other types of hearings. And then, in my time there, we did make it, you know, we've done some things around accessibility and transparency, so now, every meeting, you know, you, you can livestream session anytime you want, that's always, that's been true, at least as long as, as I've been there, but now every hearing, you can also livestream, and you can also testify remotely, which has been really important. This is rela, kind of recent, but that's been really important for a district like ours, that's a pretty big pain to get into the state. If you get into a scenario where one politician's auditing other politicians, you're just, well, I, I feel like most people would understand that scenario, but maybe things would just get political rather than an actual nuts and bolts. Here's how you can improve things in a more objective manner. And so, yeah, I'm fully supportive of an audit. I voted for it. I advocated for it. I do think it, it should be an independent auditor who does it. And I think that's, that's my understanding of where it is, where the back and forth is now.
Yeah, I campaigned very supportive for it as well, talked about it during all of our forums and voted for it as well. So I'm fully on board for auditing the legislature.
Very good. Yeah, I'm interested in it because I appreciate you folks coming here. And I appreciate all the human's work that you're going to do for us with all the petitions we're going to have for you through the years. But the state only has one bucket of money. And if the money is being spent unwisely, that limits what we're getting here with us, Chapter 70, Chapter 90 money. So, you know, there was a saying that's been hinted about the news this week that it's not a worm in an apple. It's a bowl full of worms. And that's what I'm worried about at the State House. So I really don't care who does the audit. Let's get an audit done.
Yeah. So all state agencies are already under the purview, already get audited. It's a mandate like they all do. So 99.9% of the state budget is ought under, goes to state agencies and is, you know, under an audit that happens regularly. I do agree though that, you know, or as well that, you know, there needs to be more transparency there. The Senate's put forward a bunch of proposals on this in our, in our rules around making committee votes public to everyone, making sure all testimony written or in person is, is public to people. Making sure there's more time available for notice for public hearings and other types of hearings. And then in my time there, we did make it, you know, we've done some things around accessibility and transparency. So now every meeting, you know, you can live stream session anytime you want. That's always, that's been true at least as long as I've been there. But now every hearing, you can also live stream and you can also testify remotely, which has been really important. This is rela, kind of recent. But that's been really important for a district like ours that's a pretty big pain to get into the State House. Because when I first got there, you know, anyone could come in and testify on any bill. It's a public building and it's a public process. But really what you'd have is a bunch of people from Cambridge and Somerville coming in and testifying because they're right there and they could come in. And that's just not reflective of, of our district, obviously, and not reflective of the Commonwealth. So, you know, I just say to, for anyone interested, that may legislature website, live stream debates. You can watch the whole thing. You can follow along. And then for the hearing process, not only can you follow along, you can actually sign up to testify and testify from your living room or home office or wherever you'd like. And I think that really opens it up for citizens of Pembroke and across the district in a way that, you know, wasn't previous, didn't previously exist. But I think has been a really important change.
Good. Thank you. But please take note of my interest.
Yeah, great.
Can I think, Sean?
You guys have heard my, my concerns of, since I've been on this board, my pet projects going forward. So I do appreciate you hearing me out, but most likely, and I hope the board can consider this too, that hopefully we can streamline our requests through the town manager. So it's one point of contact. Because if we go off on, hey, I know you, I know your number, that's great. If we can talk, no problem. But I'd rather let ensure that the town understands what we're doing first too. So, so that's how my contact with you coming forward will be, besides maybe a text here and go, hi, how you doing? You okay? So, but I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thanks, Sean.
Anything else?
I think you should ask Bill.
Phil, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Thank you. We have used our legislative delegation in the past for help with grants. Some have been very successful, others not. We do have a handful of grants coming up. A big one with Community Compact Program. I'll be reaching out to both of you for support on that. We are, I'm just going to share that real quick so everybody has an idea of what's going on there. We are working to upgrade our townwide fiber optics networking, connecting our buildings. It is both a public safety interest and a public schools interest. And I know this is like knowledge to a lot of people because we just met today to finalize some thoughts on how we're going to get there. But there is a $250,000 grant through the Community Compact Program available. We will be applying next month. It will go a long way to improving our public safety infrastructure and communications network and improving the connectivity with the schools. Basically, what it does is it gives us a loop throughout the system so that we have redundancy, so that we won't lose. Like if this building goes down, we lose here police, community center. You know, if a school goes down, especially the high school, because that's their hub, then their network is severely impacted. We want to create redundancy so that doesn't happen.
Yep.
So we would greatly appreciate your support there. And then we have some, some water infrastructure grants. And then obviously green communities, but that, we probably don't need your help with that one. That one's pretty good. And that they, they, I hate to use the word free flowing with money. But if you do the homework and you create the right projects, you will get the funding through green communities. So, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things there.
Thanks, Bill.
Appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, pleasure. Take care.
7:30. Introduction to Senior Services Director Diane Isapikola-Pikot.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening, Select Board. Good evening, Town Manager.
Hi, Diane.
Hello. It's an honor to be here today as the new Director of Pembroke Senior Services. I started about three and a half weeks ago. Things are going very well. The new building is just amazing, the new community center. There's a lot going on there and I'm really happy to be a part of it. A little bit about me, I'm a South Shore native. I grew up on the South Shore and I continue calling that area home. I bring 10 years of experience in elder services in the municipal environment. Most recently, I worked for the Town of Cohasset as the Assistant Director, Outreach Coordinator and Program Coordinator. I also had the opportunity in 2024, the invaluable opportunity to serve as Acting Director while the Director was out on extended leave. So I come to you with lots of experience. For those in the community that haven't met me yet, I've been trying to, you know, go around and introduce myself. I'll be having a meet and greet, a coffee, open to the public on March 27th at 10 o'clock. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Where did you say you would have that?
That's going to be at the community center. Yeah, but that is going to be on March 27th at 10 o'clock. It will be a coffee. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
We're glad to have you. I don't really have any questions. Does anybody have any questions? We also do need.
Thank you.
Sorry. We also need to appoint, appoint Diane as the Old Colony Elder Services in Greater Albor. Going on, GATRA rep. If I have a motion for that, please.
Move to point Diane Pikot as the Old Colony Elder Services in Greater Albor, Taunton Regional Transit Authority Representative for the Town of Pembroke.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Introduction to our New Library Director, Julia Nie. Hi there.
Like Tracy said, hello, my name is Julia Nie. Thank you guys for welcoming me this evening. The Pembroke Library is such a vibrant and welcoming space, which I'm really happy to actually be returning to. I was a library aide there about 10 years ago, right after college. And Pembroke Public Library was what made me fall in love with public libraries and so passionate about the services a public library can bring to its community. I've spent the past 10 years getting my master's degree at Simmons. I have a dormaster's in history and library science. And I've spent the past six years over at the Hanson Public Library, first as the reference librarian and then as the assistant director. So in my time back at Pembroke, I've been really excited by all the new programs and services that have arrived since I was first there. And I'm really excited about all the new and innovative ways we can find to serve the community going forward. So thank you again for having me tonight. And I think we've got a couple of other things we'll be talking about.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to have the Library Foundation come up before we do this presentation, if you want to come up, Mr. President. So next up, we have a vote to accept a donation of $55,000 from the Pembroke Library Foundation. Thank you.
Is that the one I have? Is this a different one? Or is that the one I have?
Thank you for having us. The Pembroke Public Library Foundation, a 503(c) nonprofit, was incorporated in 2011 with the express mission of raising funds to make improvements to our 26-year-old library. The foundation has made gifts to the town for the improvements of technology in the library, improvements to equipment, and is currently raising funds to expand and rearrange the children's room. Our goal is to add an extension of about 2,700 square feet to the existing children's room so that more children can be accommodated and educational activities in math, science, technology, et cetera, have appropriate space for these activities. The current space will be assigned, will be aligned with the expansion area. We've worked with the library staff to understand their needs and developed a plan. We asked the Select Board to accept this gift of $55,000 for the architectural fees to begin this process. We've raised over $980,000. I think the number's actually raised over a million dollars to date and need to raise additional funds. However, without plans to show what is being proposed, fundraising is challenging as is pricing for the project. We ask that you accept this gift and endorse our plan to expand the children's room. Our goals are to keep the library current and equipped to meet the changing needs of the Pembroke community. I know you will hear from Julia Nie, Nie, our library director, how extensively the library is being used. I was before this board a while ago and gave some statistics, and most people are amazed how much it is being used and the programs being offered. So we ask you to accept the gift and endorse our plans. Thank you.
And so all they need from us is a vote to accept the donation. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would move to accept the donation of Pembroke Public Library Foundation of Architectural Services for a proposed addition to the Pembroke Library, approximate value $55,000.
Second question.
Sure.
So I just want to reach out to Town Manager. Bill, I'm sure you've had discussions about this. Can you tell us about the plan? Does it fit with the town? It's obviously a very generous donation, which we're certainly willing to, to accept. But I just want to make sure it's the right thing for the town. Whenever we build a town building or do a major addition, we usually have a study group for it. So I wanted to see what, what you can explain to this board and to the community about this.
Sure. So the foundation approached me probably a few months ago now and proposed this project. I've worked with them to move through the process to make sure that we, you know, dotted our i's and crossed our t's. I think it's a great idea. I think it will upgrade the technology in the library, upgrade the space for the children. And funding is, and I'm going to say this because I think the town needs to introduce some funding, but a very small amount as a comparison to the overall cost. There's no, be no bonding, nothing of that extent. But I think it will get us a much better product if we go there. I would propose that once we get through this first phase and have a solid conceptual plan, that we have that discussion. What is the cost? What do we get for that money? And what would be that cost that the town would be willing to expend? So I think it's a great idea, especially since the majority, super majority of those funds are going to come from private resources.
The plan is to continue to fundraise afterwards anyway.
And Bill, you're thinking that it would probably come from capital expenditures?
It would, it would likely come from a free cash. It would not be to the extent where we would need a huge, a huge number. I don't know what that number is today, but I think we'll be, well, once we get through this first phase, we'll have a solid idea where that number is. And if we can take this from a, a average product and make it a great product by introducing a small amount of funding from the town. Again, I'll say it again, especially since the super majority of the funding is coming from private resources. I think it's awesome.
Anything else? Do we want to redo the motion? It's all ready. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up, we have Library Trustees and the Library Director with proposal for use of the 144 Center Street, formal location of the senior center. Well, welcome back.
Thank you. So I see that you guys have the proposal written in front of you, but I was hoping to start with some of the stats. Thank you. I know, I'm so soft spoken. I'm so used to the library. I have to whisper in here. I will work on projecting a little bit better.
Well done.
Remind me again if I start to slip into my library voice. So right here, I have the infographic from last year at the library, which I think was posted on our Facebook, on our social media, and on our website. And really shows how, how much the community is using our library. Not only did we have over 87,000 visitors to the library last year, we had almost 100,000 items checked out, over 100,000 items checked out, if you include our physical items and our digital items. And we have a lot more than books at the library nowadays. Books and magazines and DVDs and passes to museums and educational kits for kids, home improvement tools. So this over 100,000 really covers quite a few different items. We also offer a lot of programs. We had 498 programs offered last year with 18,000 people attending our programs. We have other services that we offer, including passports. We facilitated 1,401 passports last year. Kind of narrowing in on the museum passes, we offered 602 museum passes. That gives residents discounted access to local cultural heritage sites and museum and education opportunities. We also just provide information and education on using technology. We have a wonderful reference librarian and everyone on staff is always ready to help. But our reference librarian answered 945 questions last year, which I'm sure that doesn't include every single question he was asked, but all of the questions where he had to spend a couple of minutes with a patron and teach them a new skill or help them find a resource or help them find some information in order to make their life better and their community better. So I was not here for most of 2024, but looking down at this sheet about what the library was able to do in 2024, I'm really excited about what we'll be able to do in 2025. So that's kind of my starting point for the proposal of creating a library campus for the library taking over and expanding into the old Council on the Agent Building, which we shared a parking lot with and which was the library before we moved into our new building. So the premise of us moving over to the 144 Center Street, I think is the easiest way to describe it, will let us do a couple of different things, which the expansion project, which we're talking about separately, would not be met. So kind of just do a brief overview. Some of the big things we're looking for are a new trustees room slash history room, more meeting spaces, both large and small, so study rooms, project rooms, more dedicated space for technology or maker spaces, more storage for our book sale and sorting of donations. And then finally getting into kind of the parking lot itself, which if you've ever visited us on a Monday or Tuesday, is already jam packed. So kind of starting with the trustees room, history room. That's an area that we have right now. Our trustees need in there. We allow other groups to use that as their meeting space. But we had to lose our history room a few years ago with COVID. And so right now, we are a repository of a lot of town history. We have yearbooks. We have years and years of newspapers. We have genealogical records and they're all over the library. They're not in a great location. Some of them are stored in the attic because that's the space we have. And that's not a great long-term storage plan if we want this information to be accessible for years to come. And so an idea would be to create a combined trustees room and history room in the 144, which would allow us enough storage for all of our materials to be together. It could be climate controlled, so materials would be preserved for longer. And then again, it could still serve the purpose as a trustees room for meetings. It can serve as a research area, which we don't currently have, a safe research area for some of the older materials we have. So this one room would serve quite a few different purposes. And then kind of as an after effect, if we were to move the trustees room from its current location, we would then be able to expand our YA room, which is an identified need. We get so many teens in there. There's not enough space for them. In our current situation, there's not enough space for all of the YA materials. So we've had to kind of split up the YA collection a little bit. So if we were able to kind of break down a wall, we'd get a lot more shelving space for the YA materials. So everything could be in there together. So kind of tying into that too, we are looking for study room spaces and meeting spaces. That is a question we get all the time, is if we have a quiet study space. That's what people come to the library for. And while the current building is beautiful, that is also one of the first things people say to me. I've had a lot of new visitors, including the state senator and state rep visited me last week. It is a beautiful building, but just the design of it does not lend itself to quiet study since noise travels really far in there. So if we were able to have some quiet spaces to study, I think we would get a lot of people taking advantage of that. Kind of another part of meeting spaces is technology needs. This, we get, like I said in my infographic review, so many people come in to ask for help with technology. Technology is changing so rapidly and more and more things are becoming only accessible online, only accessible with a very certain computer or a very certain desktop. And it's confusing and it's scary when you're doing really important health or legal information online in a system that you're not comfortable with. And we just don't have the space to take advantage of some of the technology that we already have in the library to kind of allow people to learn new skills, allow people to access the services that they need to access. So a maker space or technology space that would allow people to. So a maker space or technology space that would allow people to explore new interests and serve themselves, and we could provide education opportunities in there, that's something that we're looking for as well. Just sorry, wrapping up a little bit, Friends Storage, we have a very active and popular friends group. They've got a very busy book sale, and we get so many donations, but we're not really able to fully process them and take advantage of how generous the community is with our current setup. So sometimes I worry that we're buying duplicated books. We might get something they don't need, but we're not able to sort through fast enough before we maybe purchase a replacement. And then finally, parking lot, someone made a face in agreement with me. Our parking lot is very full, and so the idea of us losing half of our spots if another department or organization were to start using, excuse me, were to start using the building, that's concerning to me, because what if people turn around and don't come into the library because they can't find parking? There is the access steps down to the community center, but those aren't great for parents with strollers or adults with mobility issues. So that's of concern to us. And I guess leaving you with all the information about what we're kind of looking for in 144 is, not all of this has to be done at once. I understand it's a big ask. I'm sure there are other groups that are also interested in this space, because it's prime real estate in downtown Pembroke, but I think a lot of these needs could be done piecemeal, they could be done one at a time, depending on community feedback, what they think we need. We are currently writing our strategic plan right now. We're taking community survey responses still through the middle of February, so if you haven't done a survey yet, please do. And so we'll be looking to that to kind of help inform what the library does going forward. The strategic plan will be setting our goals for the next five years, and so while these are our current challenges we think we're facing, and some things that we think could be solved with more space, we will be listening to what the community says that they want and what they're looking for from their library. I think Bob is going to finish up for me? Nope? Okay.
I'd actually like to say just a couple of things.
Okay. I thought you might want to say a few things.
Sorry, it's true. Who knows it?
Don't let him steal the feet from the jaws of victory.
I'll be brief. Because I know some of the people couldn't hear the statistics.
I'm sorry, I know.
But I think it's so important to hear. Visits to the library, eighty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-seven in 2024. Items checked out, ninety-eight thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-eight. E-books, audiobooks downloaded, forty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Programs offered, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Program attendees, eighteen thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-six. Cardholders, eighty-six thousand ninety-one. Reference requests, I've asked some help, and please don't talk about overdue books, because I am wanted in the library. Reference requests, nine-hundred-and-forty-five. Computer uses, seventy-three-hundred-and-two. Items added to the collection, seven thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-one, some of which town funds and some are from the Friends of the Pembroke Libraries. Online resource sessions, seventy-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine. Museum passes, six-hundred-and-two. And passport applications facilitated, fourteen-hundred-and-one, and that makes money for the town. It's used, and there's a lot of people that want to see a lot more go there. STEM, we want to see that coding. There's so much more we can do. When we built the library twenty-six years ago, probably started twenty-seven years ago, we thought it's going to be fine for twenty years, and it was. We need more. And the foundation has helped with part of it, and town needs to help in some other ways. And I don't think anybody can say that the goal is bad, what we're doing for adults or children, everybody across all boards, whether it be young, old. I go in there, I see students, young people studying because they don't have the quietness at their house because of whatever's going on, other issues. They don't have computers, or there's only one computer in their house and they need to use computers. So we ask that we support and everything.
So many people don't have printers at home still.
So I hope I didn't change anybody's mind negatively.
Thank you. So like I said, you have the written proposal here in front of you. This is just kind of our thought process about why we think we need it in terms of what our current building is lacking, and what we think we could do with the new space in response to requests we've gotten from the community in years past, and then keeping in mind that we will be adjusting our plan for the next five years as we complete our strategic plan. Any questions?
I do.
Please.
So if you were to take this plan and actually, this is exactly what happened, do you foresee that you would need extra staffing?
So starting off with the trustees and history room, that would be primarily, I'd imagine, on an invitation basis or on an appointment basis, it would be like the meeting rooms. People would be reserving it as research time, or people would be reserving it as a meeting space, in which case there are options for having a staff member on site, or you could have code access. Plenty of public libraries have started doing like before-hours or after-hours access for meeting rooms with private code access, so it wouldn't necessarily require extra staffing. If we were to do programs over there, yes, we would need staffing over there, but I don't know if the staffing, they would have to be there the whole time if we're using it as program space or by appointment. But the large part of this is, I think the proposal is very flexible. It allows us to go space by space. It does not have to be everything all at once. It doesn't even have to necessarily be all of these that we've talked about. It again will be in reaction to what we hear in the strategic plan about what the community is looking for.
Another idea that I thought was great a while back, but we didn't have the space, was to have a Friends bookstore.
Yeah.
And actually have the store with volunteers from the Friends manate.
Yep.
I mean, right now, they just have that little rack out front.
Yeah, so the Friends do two really big book sales a year, and then they do have the ongoing book sale, which makes quite a lot of money, and the Friends are great supporters of the library. They sponsor our museum pass program, they sponsor our bestsellers collection, so if you ever need a brand-new book that otherwise the wait would be months for, you can get it right off the shelf. They provide extra programming, they provide extra materials, and so if they were able to have a more dedicated space, I imagine they'd be able to raise more money to support the library.
That'd be nice. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Julia, so I've been reading through the packet. I didn't see an official vote from the library trustees. Have they taken a vote to support this?
Yes, I'm sorry, I left that letter out. It was from my predecessor. They had voted in October of 2023 for the library to move forward with this. I can distribute that to you.
I assume so, the way it was written.
Yes.
But I can see the vote, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing, considering anything contrary to...
Yes, I can send you that letter.
Very good.
Sure.
And moving forward, coming back for our actual consideration of vote, would you be able to have a financial piece on that, on basically what it's going to cost the library to take over this building? And what, like I said, just Tracy said, staffing, we need better. It all goes together under your auspices to the library, so we want to make sure that your budget is up to date and make sure it is affordable to the town.
Absolutely. It's something we can work on, but without hearing from you guys about the current status of the building, I've only been able to walk through once. So in terms of what it needs, we already have some of the equipment that we're hoping to be able to use. So we have a podcasting studio at the library, which we've never been able to set up. And so we have a lot of the materials that we would be bringing over there, but I would just need to know more about the current building before I could try to set up a budget or a plan about how to make it work for our needs.
Sure.
But that is something that we could definitely work towards if you guys are willing to consider the library becoming the primary users of the building.
Are we able, we can give her access to, we could go back through the building, so yeah. Okay. Do you have anything? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll let the board speak first. I just wanted to, hopefully you kick it over to town manager for his comments.
I will.
Yeah, so, yeah, a few comments. Number one, and I think we all agree, we don't need another empty building sitting out there being unused, to support especially a town building, especially a building in the center of the town. And such a beautiful building, too, with so much history.
The B. I wish the library could get its B back.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, there's a lot of history there. We have to see it put to use one way or the other. That's certainly something we don't want to see happen is seeing it unused. I know that the library has been busting at the seams for multiple reasons for a while now, and it's another, it's a gem in the center of a town, just like the community centers. We've got these two gems in the center of town that are amazing amenities that the town uses, and that increasingly folks from outside the town use as well.
Absolutely.
And that brings in, that ensures we have opportunities to bring in more revenue and interest, et cetera. Bill, what are some of the, apart from the financial component which we need, I'm glad you asked about that, I was going to ask about that, but apart from the financial component, which we'll learn some more about, what other, if any, hurdles should we, hurdles or barriers, should we be thinking about when it comes to using the center building, whether it be for this purpose or another?
Well, the biggest item right now, as you're going to hear from me in a few minutes, is cost. We have no ability to fund anything else, and we're certainly not adding new programs within our budget structure this year, and likely not next year. There's no phone, no internet, the building is minimally heated currently. All of those things would add tremendous costs to that building for operating it. We just can't afford it right now. So that, the financial piece is the biggest piece. There is obviously competition for the building. You've heard some, some at a meeting, some others. We should just look at that as a whole, and potentially talk about, you know, sharing that building with others, or sharing that building with services in a manner that is, that helps all of those interested in it. Certainly would be my goal to at least discuss that and look at how we can make that work.
I mean, one thing I'll say, I think it's always very hairy to create a commons space, personally. So I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I think it would be better to, whether it's this one entity or that entity, et cetera, it creates a better ownership structure. So I would push back against the idea of a commons kind of situation, a shared between multiple entities. I think that could get real hairy. Has any other entities expressed, openly expressed direct interest and planned on putting a presentation together for the select board sooner rather than later?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Within the next six months, maybe?
I would say within the next six weeks.
Excellent. Great. I just want to see the ball rolling.
There is absolute interest in that building.
Okay.
From multiple other people.
And that was the plan, is to have each organization present, so we can at least gather all the information and maybe have a plan for what we're going to do.
And I think part of the other thing, too, is I think it's one thing to say we cannot or will not do X, Y, and Z. I think it's another thing entirely to say, okay, this is what it would take to do something. And I think that's really what we're interested in hearing, is what would it take to do something with that building? What would it take to get there? And what sacrifices would we need to make to ensure that we don't have another empty building when we have serious needs? You know, this entity or that entity that are busting at the seams, that could use it. And what does it, what does it mean in order to make it so it can be usable? So I think that's a place we need to get to, as opposed to like, we're not going to do it, we can't do it.
But I'll go upon that for your steam. I wouldn't say sacrifices. I would say more of a solution base. So basically, what's going on, like I said, former directors before, basically have, have made sure, they've had the solutions for what they need. Could be afforded at the time, no. But I wouldn't say more sacrifices, I'd say more solution-based on where can we get from A to B to get to that finish line, whatever goes into that building. I think that's a better way to say it.
However, which way you want to put it, as long as we get there, that's what's important to me.
Yeah, because I'd rather not sacrifice.
We may have to make some sacrifices in the next year or two, so it's tight.
I mean, make our situations in a way we make them.
I think the word is, we will be making sacrifices in the next year or two.
Yeah.
Phil, did you have anything else?
No.
Anybody else? Thank you, Julia.
Thank you guys so much for letting me speak.
Next up, we have town manager's FY25 budget.
I'm going to request, I don't know if Scott is planning to stay for another hour...
Do we want to maybe jump ahead?
Please.
That's probably a great plan.
Let's allow people to get to...
Yes, let's.
I'm going to be a substantial amount of time.
All right, okay. All right, then we're going to jump to vote to appoint Scott Chaharin, Historic District Representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Do I have a motion?
I would move to appoint Scott Chaharin as the Historic District Commission Representative to the Community Preservation Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Scott. Do we want to take the minutes, too, real quick?
Please.
That would be wonderful.
Stay.
Now he's going to stay. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes of January 22nd, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Sure.
Okay, excellent. I will try to project so everyone can hear me. I know, we have, we have solved our speaker problem here for the home folks, but we still need to add some technology to solve our in-room microphone. So I will talk as loud as I can, and if you're not hearing me, please let me know. So it is with great honor that I present my budget recommendation to the select board and the advisory committee. I don't know if people know, but the advisory committee here is, have, in a meeting themselves, which started at six o'clock tonight. So they have joined us, and I'm pleased to move forward with my recommendation. Before I say that, I think I already said it once, there are no new, no new programs within this recommendation. In fact, this recommendation is very, very difficult. I have been forced to cut budget requests. I will be, if I haven't, I've spoken to most people, but there's a couple that I haven't because of conflicts with schedule. I hope it's not a surprise to anyone, and I will be explaining why some of the budget cuts were made and how we're going to attempt to mitigate some of that. My, my belief is that, and I hate to say this because it's probably not a hundred percent accurate, as a municipal government, you have no choice but to balance your budget. You cannot exceed your revenue stream. And although we have alternative resources, using them, and I'll explain why as I get through this evening, is a bad idea. Not recommended by financial advisors, not recommended by the DOR in many cases, and certainly I would not recommend it based upon my multiple years of experience. I won't share how many, but enough to know better. So with that said, moving on. Oh, before I begin, I want to take an opportunity to thank the staff of this community. I don't know, they often don't get enough thanks, and I'll be honest, I probably don't thank them enough. But our staff is probably the most dedicated staff that I've ever worked with, and I've worked with staff in multiple communities, and the staff here is completely dedicated. One thing I want to highlight, because that staff is doing jobs that isn't even their jobs, because we don't have all the positions that many of our neighbors and many other communities have. Pembroke is lean and mean. And I actually, in some ways, I like that concept, in other ways, it's for me, on a day where I experienced daily frustrations with it, so. But I want to thank them, and I want to point out that this staff is doing the following jobs, because we don't have dedicated staff for those positions. HR, we have no dedicated HR staff. IT, we have no dedicated IT staff. Facilities manager and facilities maintenance, we have no dedicated facilities manager or facilities maintenance. Grant writer, we have no grant writer. We have no ADA coordinator. I act as the ADA coordinator legally to make sure we're compliant. We have no town engineer, we have no town planner, we have no communication, official communications staff or dedicated communications staff, and we have no webmaster. Those, majority of those staff, those jobs are completed through the town manager's office. But I don't want to shortchange that, because there are other people. Every director or every department head in this town helps to serve as a facilities director. They manage facilities, manage, and a lot of them, I'm looking at two right in front of me, well, actually, three if we had Diane. They're not trained in facilities management, but they do it because they're dedicated to the job. So I just want to take the time to thank them. From the guy out there plowing the streets, the guy working on a water main break that took twenty-four hours to fix two days ago, to the staff in this building who, our treasure collector, manages the pond treatments, folks. She manages the pond treatment. She's not trained to do that. She stepped up because we needed a person to do it, and educated herself to a point where she could do that. So she manages those. You know, and over and over again... You know, and over and over again, the staff dedicated with taking on additional responsibilities that just need to get done within this community. So, my applause to the staff, and I wanna personally thank every single one of them. Second, I wanna thank all the board commission and committee members. Again, the town of Pembroke has the most dedicated board commission and committee members. That's a really positive for the community, sometimes very frustrating when they're pounding on my door saying, hey, we need these resources, we, we need your help. But it's, it's awesome, because in the absence of that, you're always looking for someone to fill a void. We're not looking for people to generally fill voids. When, when we have an absence or a vacancy in a committee, people step up and fill them. So, thank you, from school committee members to the select board, from every board committee and commission in this town. The hours that, that folks dedicate to the community for, for virtually, well, for no pay in most cases, and, and certainly not enough in those who do receive a small, small 150 bucks, you know, it's, it's just, it's unbelievable. So, again, thank you, everyone. With that said, I'm gonna move on and start with the fiscal 26 budget. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna spend a tremendous amount of time on revenue projections. And the reason I'm gonna spend that is because I want that transparency, and I want people to understand how budgets work in the municipal world. There's a lot of smart people out there who have no clue how budgets work in the municipal world. And because generally speaking, we don't spend a lot of time on our, our focus on, in public meetings, on revenue projections, so I'm gonna talk about that tonight. There are four general areas when it comes to revenue projections. They are tax levy, state aid, local receipts, and other available funds. I'm gonna get into that detail, but if we look at that, we can see where those numbers are going. One of the things that scares me a great deal is that 1.37% in state aid. And when it gets to state aid, I'm gonna point out what I will, will bet you, I'll bet you a penny, that that number won't happen, because it's, doesn't make, well, it just can't happen because of the way the formulas and the statutes work, so. Fortunately for us, it's a very small number. We historically, in the town of Pembroke, have carried the governor's budget, because it's the best indication of state aid that we have right now. It will change, and I want to make sure everybody in this room understands that state aid will change guaranteed. Many of the numbers in this are projections at this point, and over the next three months, will become firm, and those numbers will change once we become firm on those numbers. And so, moving on, we're gonna start, these are just the percentages of that. You can see that obviously our biggest percentage is the tax levy, second biggest is state aid, then local receipts, and other available funds. So, let's, real quick, I wanna just highlight this very, very quickly, and then I'm gonna talk about this later, but these are just to give you a general idea of where some of the projections that I have are. Fringe benefits, and I'll be obviously talking about some of the below-the-line numbers also. So, getting into department shares, and where they're at, you can see, obviously, and that should be the way in every city or town, well, not your super-large cities. Number of public schools is the largest, with public safety being next, and then administrative sports services and public works pulling that up. There are items that are under shared services that are our biggest, obviously are some of our biggest also, fringe benefits being the, the largest there. So, I wanted to just point out a couple things. I took a look at what our neighbors are doing. These are 2024 numbers. I'm a little frustrated that two of our neighbors haven't reported to the state, so I couldn't get their numbers, they're not on here. If you look at who they are, you'll be able to guess who they are, but I have Hanson, Kingston, Marshfield, Norwell, Plimpton, Situate, Whitman. Obviously, when you look at that list, Hanover seems to be missing, huh? Hanover's, I talk to their town manager on a regular basis, and they're struggling over there. They've, they've got some huge financial issues that they're working with. But I just wanted to show how we compare to the other communities. I did an average, I did a median, and then where Pembroke is. Generally speaking, we're below those numbers. It's just informational and, and data for, for those who wanna see it, so. All right, so we're gonna start with the tax levy. Tax levy, obviously, is our biggest source of revenue, and I'm gonna explain each category and how that works. So our projected tax levy for fiscal year 2026 is $53,66,683. Getting into it, I'm gonna first talk about the Proposition 2 and 1/2, and how Proposition 2 and 1/2 affects the community. So in the early 80s, the Commonwealth voted to limit the amount of tax that a community can levy, based upon the previous year's levy, and that's 2 and 1/2%. There are a couple of numbers that we'll talk about as we get into that, where that number can be changed slightly, but not dramatically. The way you calculate that is you take your previous year's tax levy, add your 2 and 1/2%, and then apply it to your current year number. Now, I wanna go back, actually, I can go forward, because I put the slide in there on purpose. So if we look at, is this gonna work for me? Yeah. So if we look here, this is the number that we're carrying forward. The debt exclusion is only the cost for your excluded debt. That's Proposition 2 and 1/2, debt-excluded debt that the voters have excluded. So that does not get included in your basic levy, it's added to your levy, and only amount, amount of that debt every single year. So, going back real quick, so you can see that the debt ex, the levy limit that we apply the 2 and 1/2 to is pre-debt exclusion numbers. So, next number on, on there, if we look real quick, new growth, right here, and I'm gonna talk about that, because that's a scary proposition, and it was a major change that made me scramble this week a little bit, and, and make some changes to our budgets. Actually, forced me to do some additional cutting, so. I'm not happy about that, but it is realistic. So, let's talk about the new growth. You can see where our new growth projections are. Last year was a bit artificial, in the sense that when a Catholic church, or any church, closes a church, and doesn't occupy it as a religious entity, it becomes taxable and gets added that year as new growth. St. Thackler's closed, so the church itself and the property surrounding the church became taxable. So that was actually added as new growth, and that's what bumped that from the $300,000 range to the 444. The, the rectory is still used, so it's not, that portion is not taxable, but that's where the big, the number there was. We had a couple of projects that aren't going to be completed. They're delayed, we had projected them within our number. We were carrying $375,000 until this week. I met with the assessors, and I said, it doesn't look like these are gonna happen. They came back and they said, you know, yes, we agree with you, this is the number we should be using. It created a deficit that we can't have, so I had to make adjustments. So, here it is, the projected new growth for this year is $210,000. I'm gonna talk about that later in the presentation a little bit. Well, I won't get into it now. So, that gets added, new growth gets added here, and then your levy limit is there. Next component is the debt exclusion. So here is the actual debt for our debt-excluded properties. Public safety building is on a ban, it's not permanent borrowing. Bond anticipation note, B-A-N. It isn't permanent borrowing yet, so that is an interest-only cost. I would strongly recommend, and I'm, we work with a treasurer, and she kinda controls it, so she and these five members that are on the select board, strongly recommend that we ban as much of that as we can as we go through the process. We may wanna prepay some of the debt, just to keep the cost down a little bit and reduce our interest, but what we don't wanna get into is a situation where we're paying a higher interest rate. Interest rates, in my opinion, are gonna stabilize bond rating, if, as long as we keep our bond rating where we're at long-term, interest rates aren't gonna be where they were. We're already seeing a slight decline in, now, when I say interest rates, these aren't the interest rates that you're gonna go out there and buy a car, or you're gonna go out there and buy a house with. It's municipal bonds is what I'm talking about there, 'cause I'm not so sure the other interest rates are gonna stabilize. But the municipal bond market, our financial advisor, we're working with them, and we're talking to them, and it looks like long-term, interest rates will stabilize and start to decline. What we don't wanna do is go out there and borrow $61 million for a public safety building at 5.4% if we wait two years, and ban it, pay down that a little bit, and then borrow at 4%. That's a big number, folks, so let's, let's be smart. We'll continue to work with the financial advisor and treasurer collector to-
Uh, Bill?
Do what's right.
You keep using the word ban, we've talked about it a little bit here. Can you explain to the public what that means?
So, a bond anticipation note is where you buy a portion, you bond in a short-term note, a portion of your, so we currently have $14 million in a banned bond anticipation note on the public safety building. And what that does is the bond anticipation, right now, the bond anticipation note interest is way below, not way below, but significantly below the interest we would be paying if we went to permanent borrowing. So we can do that up to 10 years legally in Massachusetts. It's smart to do that when you're doing construction, 'cause at the end of the construction, you know exactly what your interest costs are. And you know what your, your costs for the project are. There's a lot of contingency money in projects that you don't necessarily use. We did it correctly at the community center, where we didn't borrow it all at one big time. We have a significant amount still out there in a band for the community center. When we close that project, which it takes a while, it takes about a year, we will then borrow the, whatever we need for the permanent, and release back to the, to the town, the rest of those funds. So, it's smart to do that, it makes sense from right now that, in the market. When we did that borrowing, we had the exact opposite. We wanted to borrow as much as we felt safe to borrow over there, 'cause we've got 1.8%, folks. We're not getting 1.8% today, unfortunately. I wish we were, 'cause I'd borrow 61 million and do the same thing, but, well, not 61, probably 55, but. So, we're in a different position today than we were when we did the community center. You know, we had the great, what I would call a perfect storm and a positive level when we built the community center, everything seemed to come together well, so. So that, $3,044,000 gets added to your tax levy here, and then you, that's the total amount that you can levy against the, against the public. That is where we're at. So, moving on, next thing is state aid. Governor Jess came out with these numbers. We had, we were carrying some different numbers than what is here. We were very close on most of them. You know, we were, where you can see where they're at, there's the FY26, our projected number, and then where the governor came out with, with her numbers, so. Going through that real quick, the Chapter 70 went up, we're carrying the new number. I know that, there's, I've heard from a couple of people that say they're not confident in that number. Actually, the Chapter 70 number, I think, is probably a good number. There is a really aggressive approach right now that we're seeing from our legislative folks to, to take a hard look at the, the Chapter 70, and where we're going with that. So, I am actually confident with that number. The charter school tuition number, you can see the difference between our number and their number. Their number, I actually took a look at the, the stats where they got it. Some of the December numbers that we didn't have when we originally prepared this actually support their number at 3, the $301,000, so. Unrestricted general government aid, you can see we're pretty close, we were over by $6,000, so we're confident in the 2.1, assuming the legislature follows through, and we will be on the phone talking to them, and we want more than that, but we want a minimum of that, because anything below that creates a budget problem for us. So, where I had spoken about, some of the state aid numbers aren't accurate. I hate to say this, but this is the second year in a row this has happened. This number right here, the, the elderly senior, the veteran blind senior and elderly exemptions, okay? Unless you have a ton of people that are being added to blind, certified blind, senior that are eligible for the program, or elderly that are eligible for the program, that number's not going up. That number always goes down, because people are falling off the program, not being added to the program. We haven't had a big recent war where people are returning from war, where the veterans are going way up, unfortunately. You know, our elderly are passing away, which reduces that number. Last year, the number was similar, when the governor's budget came out. I actually talked to the aides for Senator Moran at that time, and said, hey, that, that number can't possibly be right. If it's right, please do that. One of the things that frustrates me as a manager is when their numbers are wrong, and I can pick it out just by looking at it, and I don't even have to do the math on it, they should catch that. So unless they're changing the formula, which I've heard no bill for to do it, that number will likely be in the 120 range. We can cover that, we have a plan to cover that, but I wanna point it out, because I don't think it's accurate. Last year, this is the final number, when we had a similar number on the governor's budget, so. And then, public libraries, little bit frustrated with this. I don't like it. We generally like to see our library go up on a, on our basis. You know, we had the big jump between 24 and 25, and then last year was a little bit, no, no. Yeah, the big jump between 24 and 25, and then the projection was that we wouldn't see that same level of a jump, but we're actually seeing it, the, the library number go down, which I, I don't like to see, so that'll be one of the topics I have with our legislative group. It's not a lot of money, we're talking a few hundred dollars, folks. I mean, but it makes, can make a difference. So, that's, that's where we're at with that. That's the state aid number that we're carrying, that, as I said, will change. The House will pick it apart, then the Senate will pick it apart, then they'll get together and talk about it, and then they'll come up with a final bill, and the governor will probably make some cuts that she doesn't like, and send it back to them. Who knows whether they override her cuts or not, but that number won't be our final number, let's just hope it's higher than that number. So, local receipts. Local receipts are, other than tax or state aid, that we collect. The big one, the, the big two are the first two. Where we're at with motor vehicle excise and meals tax, those are the two that tend, over historical time, to be the most volatile. Generally speaking, when you looked at the, the two previous downturns in, in economics, you saw motor vehicle excise go down, meals tax, the first time we had that downturn in the 90s, meals tax didn't exist, so. But since that time, we, when you see that, you see the meals tax actually drop. So, I am pleased to report that that isn't the case for this fiscal year that we're in now. We have our, what we consider the third quarter fiscal year, but they consider their first excise commitment, and it is actually up. So we actually made a change to this number from what we were carrying before, based upon that information. If people already bought those cars, unless they move out of Pembroke or sell those cars, they're gonna be taxable next year, too, so. Meals tax, we have good trending there. Actually pleased, we have new restaurants, so I'm projecting that that will go up. Obviously, penalties and interest, we do trend lines on all of those, but those, the next items on the list generally are pretty stable, except for investment income. And the reason for investment income changes is 'cause we're not investing as much money, because we don't have as much money in the bank, because we're spending more money on our budgets. And I'm gonna talk about that a little bit as we close out this evening, so. That's it for, for, for local receipts I'm gonna highlight. There's the trend lines that we saw. Obviously, we budgeted far less because of some indicators last year. Those indicators have now improved, and hopefully we can continue that. It won't be the same trend that we saw from '22 to '24, but it won't be that downward trend that we were projecting, so. Excise tax, we had estimated in our budget for 25, $3,150,000. We can now project, based upon where the numbers are. The third quarter number is in, we just haven't put it here, because it's not posted yet. Those of you who live in Pembroke who have cars know it's here, because you got your excise tax bills, right? So, good news for us, we can now project that, that number is gonna be 3,496,327, which is a good increase from where we were, which helps us to increase our FY26 projection. We have now changed that to $3.6 million, so. Meals tax, similar situation here. We had estimated in our budget, $440,000, and we can now project 470,000, that is, yeah, 470, I think, 47281. So, that's very good news for us. You know, the fourth quarter tends to be the lowest quarter, we're not sure why that is, I guess it's when people start picnicking. Fourth quarter is obviously April, May, and June, so they're, they're dining, not dining in restaurants as- April, May, and June, so they're, they're not dining in restaurants as much. And if you look at those trend lines, the second and third quarter, well, first quarter was okay, too. So, anyway, we're projecting now four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for our meals tax. Once we get our third quarter in, we'll take another look. That will be before we vote in May, and we may have to make some small adjustments to this, but knock on wood, let's hope those adjustments are up. So, moving on to other available funds. So, the other available funds are mostly transfers or some other, other items. So, I'm just going to go through them real quick. The capital stabilization fund, that is a transfer from stabilization to offset some capital costs. We have traditionally, under my tenure, used thirty-five thousand dollars to, to cover certain items of, and basically, it covers some debt costs that we were projecting there. Big change this year, and this is helping to cover our budget, and we may see some pushback on this. The ambulance fund. I took a look at ambulance runs, and the ambulance runs are way up, based in comparison as a percentage of our overall fire department runs. So, I am projecting to use more of the ambulance fund to cover our operating costs. That money is collected for the purpose of providing ambulance service. In, in this case, it, it was used this or used for cash, and I'm a little more comfortable from a, a bond rating agency perspective using this, because that's what it's intended for. Septic loan program, if you have participated in that, if you had a failed septic or a failed Title V, and you needed to do it, and didn't have the funds to do it, the town, through a state program, interest-free, will help you and give you funds to pay that, pay that for you. You have to pay it back to the town. That's what this number is. It's the bonding that the town takes out through the state program, and that, that is a, that payment number, that seventy-three and change number repays that from the resident payments to the town. Next one is the GATRA grant. That's the, Diane will know all about this one, but that's GATRA through the state, gives the town a grant. It's a hundred and five thousand dollars to offset costs for, for transportation. If you don't know what GATRA stands for, it is...
Greater Attleboro.
Greater Attleboro Transit, yeah.
Regional Authority.
Yes, thank you. And I was surprised that they're, they've expanded their service, because I actually saw a GATRA van in Natick the other day. I was very, very surprised that, that they're bringing people to the Natick Mall. But, anyway, that is what it is. So, the next line item is the school athletic fund. This was for some improvements many, many years ago, coming to an end soon. This is the debt cost for that. And you could see that, generally speaking, because we level fund our, our principal payment, that the cost goes down over time. And you can see that trend line, if you look there, that that cost is going down. And that's because we're paying less interest. We're paying more principal upfront. We don't do it as a traditional mortgage on most of our projects. We want to pay as much interest upfront and, and get that resolved as quickly as we can. Next item is recreation revolving. This is to cover some staffing at the recreation, in the recreation department. This is a longstanding process that the town has used. I will likely reevaluate this as we move through the next several years. I would like to have recreation revolving money go into programming and not staffing, but right now, we're stuck with this model. We just don't have a number of alternatives. Next one is school construction. This is the MSBA repayment that we have to transfer. This no longer will happen when this is paid off. It's a couple of years out. The MSBA today, if they give you grant money toward a school project, it comes off the top. They don't bond it and then make you take it off every single year. They pay it to you, so you can take it off of your bonding, and there isn't that additional layer that you have to deal with. They've changed that statute. I think it's a much better approach for municipal government. So, water enterprise indirects, I'm going to take a minute to explain this. I'm going to actually talk about water enterprise indirect and solid waste indirects in the same venue. Indirect costs, because these operate as a business, enterprise funds function where they, there is no tax dollars that support them. There are fees for use in water, for connections in water, on the water side, and obviously, everybody knows you pay a solid waste fee to the town on the other side. So, there's no tax dollars. So, we can't charge general fund monies for the indirects, so the, the enterprise funds have to pay back municipal government for those services. Services such as fuel, such as insurance, such as time the town managers spend dealing with those issues through payroll. All, all of those items are paid back to the town as an indirect cost. So, that, those are two, those are numbers. Cemetery trust funds, that's also debt. You can see that same trend line on that. That's almost paid off also. Regional ACO, I want to take a moment to talk about this. Hanover is having financial woes, as we talk about. We share this with the town of Hanover. We have added a couple of things, or had added a couple of things per their request, and were decent things that we participated in, and also, they contacted us and said, Bill, we can't afford it. So, we cut those out of the budget. As a result of that, there is some, some cuts in the ACO budget, and Hanover is only going to pay half the cost. They're still paying half the cost, but the, that half the cost is now lower because of those budget cuts. So, that, that's why you see that, that downward turn there. And finally, miscellaneous, this is use of free cash within our budget. Not something I want to do, and I'm going to talk about that in a bit, but necessary to, to make it work this year. So, so, here's the proposed budget. As we look at it, I know that several, just about most departments didn't get what they asked for. I, I appreciate everybody working with us to get there, and I, and I know it creates a tremendous burden for, for a number of departments, but we can't overspend our revenue. So, we've had to make some very difficult decisions based upon this. So, that's the overview. Major expense drivers, and I highlight these not because of their overall expense piece, but because of some issues that I want to talk about. So, the first is the retirement. Second is health insurance, and the third is property and liability insurance. So, on retirement, we are subject to Massachusetts pension system through PERAC. We are members of the Plymouth County Retirement Board, and these are our retirement assessment. That's going to change in a few years. The retirement assessment's going to be paid up, and this number will drop significantly. Our financial management plan says we will shift those funds to offset our OPEB costs. OPEB is other post-employment benefits. Municipal government provides other benefit, benefits to employees post-employment, and so, we will shift those to pay down our OPEB. I am considering that we're not going to need that much money to pay down OPEB. I think we trend that, do it correctly, so we can show our bond rating agencies, here's a solid plan, but part of that solid plan is, we're going to make sure we're solid, not spending one-time funds within our budget. So...
Question. Presuming this is each year, I know you don't have years mentioned there, but that's each year. Looks to me, looking at these, that that's not a constant rate of increase. That's an accelerating...
Pension? Pension is very accelerated.
Yeah.
Very, very, very accelerated.
Are, what are we doing, or what can we do to mitigate that?
So, we have, what we, what can happen, there really isn't anything we can do to mitigate it. We're only one vote within that structure. What the retirement board could do to mitigate that is to extend the pension out. Many, many retirement boards in many communities have, instead of closing it before 2030, have extended out to 2035, which then reduces that, that increased number that you're seeing, reduces the increase. It's a geometric increase that, you can obviously see that trend line. In fact, let me just get there, so you can see that it's, it's a very aggressive number.
Just real, real quick, Bill, to emphasize your point. The retirement board wants everyone to be deficit-free by 2030. That's the target date. That's where that number comes from, that year comes from.
Based on actuaries, yes. Yep. So, that's good news and bad news. I mean, we won't have a 2030, you know, number, but between now, it's going to be over a million dollars a year increase, which eats, on our budget, if you think about it, seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars, a million dollars is eating up your proposition two and a half increase, and it takes away from everybody else. So, second thing I want to talk about, or just, I just want to point this out. Every year, we do a retirement savings calculation, because we have a choice through Plymouth County Retirement Board to make a one-time payment in the summer months, in July. And if we do that, based upon our calculations and our current interest rates, the town will save, no, that number's wrong. Sorry. Let me look at this real quick. No, that number is correct. Wow. So, we could save a huge amount of interest, a huge amount of numbers, based upon that, because of the interest we would collect on that's fifty-nine, roughly fifty-nine thousand dollars, and we're going to have a savings by paying it all upfront in a one, one-time payment. We do this just to make sure that we're there. The reason I highlighted healthcare, healthcare isn't a big deal this year. I've made some assumptions in, in our healthcare. I take our actual enrollments, and I changed this last week, because our enrollment numbers changed, and I try to project where the, the numbers are going to be. I was at a Mayflower Municipal Health Group meeting last week. We are participating in Mayflower Municipal with a bunch of other to lower our healthcare costs, a bunch of other communities and entities. Also, there's some fire groups and some other things that are members also. A statement was made by their advisor that we could likely, likely see a twenty percent increase in healthcare costs or insurance costs for four to five years coming. Now, and they, they cited why, and it's, you know, legit reasons why that would happen. Having said that, Mayflower Municipal Health Group is in tremendous, tremendous financial position, really good. And, and we have a vote, and it looks like Mayflower is going to take some of that fifty million dollars that they're sitting on and offset the rate increases for the next four to five years. I want to caution everybody, because that's absolutely awesome. I actually changed my projection and, and improved it two percentage points on the increase as a result of that discussion, which lowered this number for us, which is awesome. What scares the hell out of me is, what do you do in year six? Now, I know, you know, many of us may not be here in year six. I hope I am, but who knows? You just don't know. You know, I could get hit by a bus tomorrow, so...
Win the lottery, Bill. We don't get hit by buses.
Well, you know, that, that's what I usually say, too. But, you know, I could win the lottery and move to Jamaica. Who knows? No, wouldn't be Jamaica. Anyway, what are you doing in year six? Because now, if they take that twenty percent and they keep that number under ten, that's a, that's a minimum of a ten percent contribution that they're using at-risk funds to offset rate increases. In year six, those at-risk funds are going to be gone, and now, you're looking at a fifty percent increase, plus the twenty for year six. That's a seventy percent increase in your, in a one-year number. So, we need to, we need to be cautious about that. We need to think about that in our long-term financial management plan, and, and stay on top of it. Put a thumb on it, put a tack in it, as I say, and definitely have it on our list of things to watch, because that's not affordable. That's, that's, that's a pension hit on, on ten million dollars. You, you're looking at, if you're looking at seventy million on ten million, which is probably, at that point, going to be fourteen or fifteen million, it's a big number that we could not afford. So, we need to plan for that. One of the things that we need to do is, we need to look at our plans that, that we offer. We still offer a really, really good plan for employees. We probably need to try to negotiate that away and start to transition those plans into the more affordable plans. So, we have some great plans that are affordable, that have, you know, slightly larger copays, but we also have some plans that still have five and ten dollar copays for, for, for prescriptions and other things that, that cost us more money. And we have sixty-some odd people in those plans, townwide. We likely need to transition away from those as step one. We also need to start talking about and negotiating with our union groups, that seventy-five, twenty-five split. There's still a few out there that are at seventy-five, twenty-five, but most have started to transition away from that. So, we need to take a look at that. I am certainly bringing up in all of the negotiations that I'm talking about, because I think it's important. Are we likely to get there? I think that's a long-term perspective. You know, collective bargaining units aren't going to likely want to agree to that. There's, there's going to be some other type of incentive that we're going to likely have to offer, or we're going to have to go through the statutory process and force the groups into that. Not an ideal process, in my opinion. However, if you get to a point where you're going to lay off forty people, or you're going to readjust your healthcare, I think we're better off readjusting our healthcare. So...
Took us about seven years to get to seventy-five, twenty-five.
I know, I know. It's, it's not something that happens quickly, but something we need to start thinking about. So, so, those are the, the three biggies with the property and liability insurance. And the reason I have this flagged is because, again, another item that we have been warned about, double-digit percentage increases on this for the next several years. And my frustration is that, in the town of Pembroke, we have a really, really, really good track record with insurance. We've had, not had a lot of huge insurance claims, not in the last three years, at least. So, I am exploring insurance. I've met with our insurer. I've met with other potential brokers, and to make sure that we do two things. Cost is one thing. I want to make sure our cost is correct, and as low as we possibly can get it, with the following notes. I want to make sure we mitigate the risk that's out there from municipal governments right now. That biggest risk is cyber, cyber liability. You know, I, we added cyber liability under my tenure. We didn't have it before I came. And now, when we take a look at the cyber liability policy, it's not really adequate for what some of the cyber hits that are out there in the industry. So, we're reviewing that. We're reviewing, top to bottom, our property and liability insurance, to make sure there's no gaps. I did a review. I asked for, asked the consultants to take a review, and there's gaps. Gaps that I was frustrated by. I knew of some of the gaps, and we just weren't willing to pay the cap. We, that risk to us was a couple hundred thousand dollars at a premium of like sixty-eight thousand dollars. To me, paying a premium of sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's going to maximize your payback of two hundred thousand dollars. I'd rather take that sixty-eight thousand dollars and set it aside. So, I accepted that risk, but there are risks out there that, that, and sublimates, that are very frustrating to me. One that wasn't disclosed, that I found, so I, we take a look at it. We're going to make sure we have the proper insurance. We're going to mitigate our risk and keep our costs low. You know, most of the communities are carrying umbrella insurance that is double what we're carrying. So, and umbrella insurance is cheap. Makes no sense not to carry it. So, we're looking at that. Here is the projected number for that. And I wanted to just take the opportunity to highlight that. So, here's where the budget totals fall. Remember, I forgot to put the column headers. That's funny. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. So, twenty-four was last year, twenty-five were fiscal, twenty-five we're currently in the middle of, and twenty-six, we have a projected surplus of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. It's not really a surplus, folks. And I, I can explain why, but it's not a surplus. You can't tax a half a penny. The tax rate has to be an even penny, and when you round, to make an even penny, you can't round up. You have to round down. So, you have to reserve that to make sure that your budget actually closes in the green. So, getting into some other things, cuts, you're going to see these. I'm going to talk about some of them. I'm not going to talk about others. Advisory committee, sorry, folks. I took a look at trend line on advisory committee. They're not spending the five thousand, so this one was kind of an easy cut. And, and there's a way for me to mitigate some, many of these... And, and there's a way for me to mitigate some, many of these cuts. So, Advisory Committee, I cut your materials line item. If you need some paper, you need some copies, you need that, come see me. We'll make it work out on another budget. Animal Control, this is the negotiations with the town of Hanover. And a couple of things that we threw in ourselves to make that go down. Assessors, there's a couple of areas that I spoke with the Chief Assessor about. And do that. Commission on Disabilities, they just don't spend any money. You know, their spend is not even four fifty, but I wasn't, I was uncomfortable not keeping it, keeping a budget for them. Fire, small number there. Herring Fisheries, small number. And those, the Herring Fisheries Historical Commission, Memorial Committee, we can cover those costs in other budget if we have to do that. They haven't historically hit that. Well, that's not true for Herring Fisheries, but it's a very small cut that they're going to have to absorb. Library, there's a couple of areas there. We're fixing some things. We're going to move a couple of items to capital so that we can cover that somewhat. Similar to the approach that I asked the schools to do, to take some of the curriculum costs and put them on our capital. And where you're going to see that when we talk about, we're not going to talk about capital tonight, but when we do talk about capital, you're going to see that. Recreation, no, police. Police, you'll probably hear from the police chief on this one. I'm just going to ask for your support, and let's work through the year and see what happens. Recreation, schools, obviously, a big cut from their ask. It's still a substantial increase over their budget in fiscal twenty-five. And I get it, we're all struggling, but unfortunately, when you're fifty-one percent of the town's budget, if we gave that to you, we'd be laying off a significant amount of people on police, fire, and public works, because when it comes to layoffs, it's very difficult. I can't lay the Veterans Services person off. I can't lay the building clerk off. I can't lay the border health clerk off. I can't lay our support for our planning and zoning. If I do, you close those offices. They're all one-person offices, folks. DPW clerical, even though there's two people sitting there, there's only one of them that's dedicated to DPW. The other person's dedicated to water, so if you lay one of those off, that stops. So, it has to come from our bigger departments. It's the only options that we have, and we really have to work together to find a way to get there. Senior, C O A, again, there's some things there that we can do to move that. We'll monitor it as we do. And one thing I'm doing is I'm putting these on. We're developing the list. The list is not complete tonight of add-backs in the event we do get more money. Town Accountant, Town Clerk Elections and Register. Somebody said to me, why are you cutting that budget when it's already going down twenty thousand dollars? Well, it's going down twenty thousand dollars because we don't have a federal election this year. So, there were some other things that we felt that we could cut. We're going to obviously monitor that. And then Town Manager and Select Board. The big cuts there, and I know some people may not be happy about, is partially staffing. We have a vacancy there for a clerical person. We're cutting that in half, and the other cut is pawn treatment. We're making that cut. We're going to monitor that.
You say we're cutting pawn treatments?
Not entirely. So, we're cutting some, we're going to have to cut. We haven't made that final decision. We cut the budget. We're going to look at ways to mitigate that. But we won't be doing a hundred percent of what we did in past years. Some pawns will still, because of the way the growth is, will still get that. Some won't.
There's some like environmental grants or things like that?
We're looking, but there's nothing that supports that type of a treatment, so...
Aren't we contracted, though?
Contracted, all of our contracts say, subject to appropriation. So...
So, do you meet with all of these departments and...
I do. Most of them are, no. There's a couple, and I apologized earlier. Our schedules didn't meet. So, they know and will know, and will work out. If they disagree with my cuts, we'll work it out.
Are there any surprises here for them?
Tonight?
Julia, unfortunately. Well, we had, yeah, we had talked about it, but I didn't, you didn't have that number. Right. So... So, those are the cuts. Some of the departments had asked me, can you at least share with the board and the public what we're asking for? And I think that's a completely reasonable ask. You know, here's, here's what we're asking for. Talk about stabilization, stabilization fund balances. This is where we're at. Those are the numbers as of today. Actually, as of yesterday. I dropped them out yesterday. We likely didn't post any interest today, so... I'm going to talk about this because I know there's pressure to use stabilization fund. It's a really bad idea, a really, really bad idea. Unless the stabilization fund is set aside for a specific purpose like capital, where the expectation of our bond rating agency is for us to use that, we should not be using the stabilization funds. Special education is for a specific person, and I think that's, you know, if you have a special education need, we could certainly tap into that one a little bit. The rest of these, because of the way they're structured, if we tap into them, we're likely, the bond rating agency is likely going to say, you did a bad thing. And when, and I was going to calculate the number, and I just ran out of time. I got sandbagged. It was a last-minute thing. We are going to borrow close to a hundred and ninety million dollars over the next six years. If you take that a hundred and ninety million dollars, and our bond rating takes a tank, even a very small tank, we're going to pay millions and millions and millions of dollars. The money that we would have spent would be geometrically increased in our cost component on the borrow, the interest for those programs. And I will share that as we meet Advisory, Select Board, and I'm going to share another factor where I'll be sharing some of those numbers also as we conclude my discussion this evening, so... Use of free cash. I took this out of the advisory form of the Department of Revenue. I'm actually just going to read it in its entirety. There's, this is the two middle paragraphs. They talk about what is free cash, which free cash is just the summary of your unspent funds plus your excess revenue at the close of your fiscal year, so... Technical Assistance Bureau, that's part of the Department of Revenue. For those who don't know, recommends that communities understand the role free cash pays and sustain a strong credit rating. It encourages them to adopt policies on its use. Under sound financial policies, a community strives to generate free cash in an amount equal to three to five percent of its annual budget. I will note, we are barely there. Okay? This goal helps deter free cash from being depleted in any particular year, which enables the following year's calculation to begin with a positive balance. Under my tenure, we will do that. Unless Town Meeting goes completely against my recommendations, we will never begin the following year without a positive balance. It is completely stupid. Moving on. To do this, the community would orchestrate conservative revenue projections and departmental appropriations to produce excess income and departmental turnbacks. I want to note, we have historically used conservative revenue estimates, so we're trying to get to that three to five percent number. We are not this year. We are estimating our revenue at as likely the top as we could possibly get to make sure we can close this budget gap. Are we exceeding that number? Am I, have I indicated in any of the revenue streams, monies, like, say I estimate a hundred thousand where I know it's going to be eighty? No, I have not. But I'm at seventy-eight or eighty. So, we need to understand that. And what that means is that our free cash next year is likely to be lower than our free cash this year, because we're spending, we're doing, we're not exactly doing what they're recommending there. As a non-recurring revenue source, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, funding capital private projects, replenishing other reserves. When a community incorporates free cash into revenue source projections for the next operational expenses, it is prudent to place a percentage restriction on the total free cash to be used. I've done that, okay? We have over three million dollars in free cash. I'm using a million fifty. I have restricted that. We're also using a bunch for capital, and we're doing exactly what they said for replenishing reserves. So, we're okay there. I disagree, and I'll stick my multiple years of experience. There is a recurring number within your free cash that you can use to operate your budget. I think we've exceeded that a little bit. I'm not uncomfortable where we're at with our free cash use, because I know next year, we're going to have, we're still going to have free cash. It's just not going to be, not likely to be without something happening on our revenue stream that's unheard of, not unheard of, but unpredicted. So, I'm comfortable with where we're at with our free cash use, but I want to caution us as we move forward that there will be less free cash to apply to budgets, and that percentage that we cap it off at will likely cause us to have less free cash. I want to talk about collective bargaining. As I noted, most, I'll just say it. All of the towns and schools' collective bargaining agreements expire at the end of this fiscal year, except for one. Okay? There's only one that will carry through for the next two years. Everyone, every, all those others are done at the end of this fiscal year. This is a projection based upon the fiscal twenty-twenty-five budget of our total costs for labor within collective bargaining agreements. So, we've got roughly forty-one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Those are the costs that are there. I want to note, because of the way our bylaw is structured, on the town side, we don't include these numbers, and I disagree with that philosophy, by the way. We don't, I think that you should carry a number for, to cover your collective bargaining costs. We don't do that in Pembroke. We bring those agreements, MOAs, to the Advisory Committee a minimum of thirty days prior to Town Meeting, and then we fund them through an additional source. But we're funding them through one-time funds, either free cash or an overlay release for that fiscal year, which is creating a shortfall, because then you have to fund that in addition for the succeeding years. I haven't had time to talk to the Bylaw Review Committee on this or the Finance, or the Advisory Committee, to see if they would support a concept that, within the Town Manager's budget, you put a number for, here's what we think is going to cost us to solve our collective bargaining. The schools do it. You know, the schools have autonomous budgeting under the Everformat, so they can do it legally.
It's a double-edged sword.
I get it.
Because if you say you're going to have a million dollars for your raises, then when you go to negotiate, you're going to go, one million bucks.
But we're negotiating with so many unions that they're not going to know what's allocated to them, generally speaking. And I get it. I understand.
You love the discussions.
I understand. So, anyway, I just wanted to show this, show the potential impact, because none of those are settled at this point. Is that correct, those who are school committee members? I'm obviously joking, because we're going through the same things you are, so... Probably not as bad, actually, but, so... Discussion. I always want to have a final discussion before I close. Revenue options. We need to get as much new growth as we possibly can. New growth, under Proposition Two and a Half, is the lifeblood of communities. You saw the levied calculation where you add the new growth number there. You need new growth to be able to support that. I am going to be bringing many, handful of potential new growth projects to Town Meeting. Some won't, based on advice and counsel, won't necessarily have to go to Town Meeting. But those that do, I'm asking for everyone's support of those programs. It is the lifeblood of our community, and it's going to be the only way to help us mitigate and offset a proposition two and a half override. I'm going to talk about that in a minute. State aid, it's going to be a tough year. There's no election this year. There's no incentive. State revenues are not hitting their benchmarks for the second year in a row, which means they don't have the necessary funds to help us with state aid. We need to stay on our legislators. Let's not spend funds where we don't need to and give it to the cities and towns. I mean, we're the ones that are paying it through our income tax. I guarantee you, the town of Pembroke, I know you've asked, it's not as easy to calculate, and...
I've gone back and forth with the AI on it. You'd be surprised what that thing has spit out.
To use a term, the juice isn't worth the squeeze, but, sorry, Steve.
Use the AI to help you. You'd be surprised.
We will continue, we will continue to work it. It's just, obtaining all that data is just virtually impossible to get there. But I can guarantee you, based upon back-of-the-envelope numbers, that we pay more to the state than the state gives us aid, as the town of Pembroke. So, we need to stay on our legislative groupings, understanding that there are only, you know, three members of a very large package of legislators at the State House, and do everything we can to do that, whether it's Chapter Seventy, Chapter Ninety. Chapter Ninety doesn't help us, because it only offsets a capital cost, but Chapter Seventy and other certainly unrestricted general government aid, sorry, folks, certainly do help us. And we need to, you know, anybody who wants to talk to the legislative delegation, give them a call. Say, hey, we need your support. At the very least, we need to make sure that that number that's on our number, on our state aid today, doesn't go down. And at the best, goes up. Local receipts, there's not a lot we can do with local receipts. We've done everything we can. Many of the fees are not controlled locally in the registry stuff or taxes or other things. They're set by the statute or the state. Or there are pass-throughs where the direct cost is what you get back in a local receipt. Or we're already at the top of our region. We adjust, are in the process of adjusting some of the fees that the Town Manager can adjust. And most of the fees go to the Select Board for them to adjust, but there are fees that the Town Manager could adjust. Just did the analysis, and we're projecting those in our, in our budget. Stabilization, we have stabilization. It's a rainy day funding. We absolutely have to get there under, if there's no other alternative. However, if we do that, there are certainly some bond rating considerations with large unissued debt on our books. Potential huge problem for us. It'll cost us many millions more than the number we could use. We only have six million dollars. Do the math, a one percent increase on a hundred and eighty million dollars, folks, that's a one-year cost. So, it isn't worth it. Free cash, we're already using slightly more than is recommended. Bond rating concerns, although I'm not as concerned, because we have followed best practices in on limiting it and making sure we have our financial management principles in order. And then the final discussion point is, I'm going to talk about what our neighbors are doing. Starting in twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-seven, actually, twenty-twenty-six, every neighbor, except for one, will have had or will have a Proposition Two and a Half vote. Twenty-four to twenty-six. So, and they're voting the twenty-six right now. We're not, okay? We're better. We're doing a better job than they are, under some severe constraints and cost increases and inflationary time. I can't guarantee that I won't be recommending an override for fiscal twenty-twenty-seven. And I just want people to understand that and what that means. And as a result of that, I, let me finish then, and then we'll go back to that. Use more ambulance fund. We did that study. We are doing that. Raising the community center fees, I don't want to do this. We promised our residents when we built that building that there would be certain fees, and we're charging those fees, and we're doing pretty well over there. We're going to continue to do that. If you're in that building any given day, it's amazing what's going on over there. You folks are there every day. So, you know, thumbs up to the operators, thumbs up to the community for supporting that building. I mean, it's working out for us, so let's not, let's not put a hamper on that. Expense reduction, obviously, service cuts and layoffs, reducing overtime. I have reduced overtime. There is virtually no overtime in this building anymore in many of our departments. Our public safety departments have overtime, however, I have reduced police overtime. You'll likely hear from them. I'm asking for your support, and let's try to manage our way through it. If we are forced to, we can make mid-year adjustments at upcoming town meetings, but let's manage our way through it and see what we can do. So, other items and other considerations that we need to look at. Okay, voc tech, obviously, that's an unknown where we're going. That's, you know, the school committee's doing a job considering that. I know there's a voc tech commission, committee. I'm all on it. There's actually a meeting next week, right?
Yep.
So, we'll continue to look at that, continue to study that, and, but we need to understand and calculate what the costs are. Capital needs, I've frozen a lot of capital projects as a result of this to reduce that borrowing number. We're doing as much as we can through free cash, and if there's any projects that will create additional costs, you've heard me talk about my fish. I won't get into the fish tonight. Maybe I will. I like the fish. tonight, maybe I will, I like the fish. So, if, there are certain things that if you don't fund it. So there's the fish, everyone. Camera, fish. At this point, if you haven't done your capital, it costs you more to do, and I'll give you a couple of real easy examples. A roof that's failing, okay? If you catch it before that, where that cross is on the fish, if everybody can see it, it costs you less money than if you let it go by, because if a roof is failing and you let it get beyond that point, you now have wet insulation that you have to replace, you have substructure that you have to replace, you have certain code requirements, if you get that, mold, et cetera, that you have to mitigate. You absolutely need to catch those capital projects before they get to that. Roofs are one, roadways are another, which is why we've looked at and have had some really good success with some new roadway programs that we talked about, I won't get into tonight, but if you're interested, call me, I'll tell you about them. We're going to continue to use those because they're cheaper and they do a really nice job. Drive down 27 or School Street, you're going to see, that's one of those new programs, and it's good, right? And it was half the cost of a traditional paving project. So, invest, right? So, we're going to continue to use those. So, but what we're not going to do is, we're not going to defer those capital projects that cost us more money. It's stupid. I use that word a lot tonight, sorry.
Stupid is stupid.
Right, you know, emergency needs, those are things we don't know today. You know, we could have a HVAC unit fail, library, it won't because we're about to fix it, got to get a new one. So, you know, you could have things that you just don't know about. You could have a storm that puts a tree through a roof or whatever, we just, those emergency needs that you should, we need to have a plan for, and we do, but if those needs exceed some of the insurance, then we're going to need to plan for that. Town meeting approval of new growth projects, I alluded to this a short time ago. I'm going to take responsibility for the big Y fiasco, okay? I'm going to do a better job next time. Big Y's not coming back, folks, at least not to mine knowledge, they haven't talked to me and I haven't talked to them. But we do have some other plant, other groups that want to build within our community. Some of them are going to require town meeting approval. They're not nearly, the scope is of a big Y, but I'm asking for your support for those. It's going to help us mitigate future costs. Not only that, you get employers, you get employees, you get taxes paid, and you get goodwill, so, let's, and if you do it right, you get future projects. When I worked for the town in Natick, we did our new growth planning really well, and we built a new school, we built a new municipal fire station similar to what we're building here, we built town hall with no override votes because we worked our growth. Now, Natick isn't, Pembroke's not Natick, we don't have the space that Natick has, but we can do it on a much smaller scale, and we're working with developers who want to come and work with us. So, let's show future developers that we're willing to work with them also. And then, Steve.
What's the status on the Bristol Brothers Development Center of Town?
Meeting with them, either tomorrow or next Wednesday. I'm meeting with, talking with two developers for projects, they're one of them, and one meeting is tomorrow, one meeting is...
I think Bristol is tomorrow.
Bristol's tomorrow? Yeah, so I'll know more on that. And then we have staffing needs. Unfortunately, we can't continue, or shouldn't continue, with the list I gave you before as non-staff. Some of them, absolutely. You know, I'm happy to be the facilities guy, I have a solution for that that I'm going to share in a minute also. Happy to be the IT guy, I'm very good at it. Grant writing, I'm mediocre at it, but we've had some successes with some help. Thank you, by the way. She actually helped us get one, so. Happy to be the ADA coordinator, you know, that's a very low lift. Not good with town engineer, not good with town planner, although the question is whether we truly need 100% of that, I think we do to a point. And then, obviously, webmastering communications, we've been working on a plan for that.
Was the ADA coordinator key in the past, or was that a volunteer?
ADA coordinator was mostly volunteer, it was such, it was five hours a week, so, that's an easy absorb. So, and then, moving forward, I think that's it. So let me talk about a couple of things that I want to assist in having people understand municipal budgeting. So next Wednesday, 6:00 PM, in this room, I'm going to do a deep dive into our budget. Similar tonight, but we're going to go a little bit deeper, and I'm going to ask, anybody who wants questions, bring them. Let's take a look at every line item if we need to, you know, so people understand where our budget is at. We'll be doing the same thing the end of the month at the community center, different, slightly different topics, so if you want to come to both, great. And we will be presenting to advisory and the select board as soon as we resolve that schedule, when we want to do what. Every single town budget will be presented, line item detail, to those two groups to go through. Schools do a separate budget process with the school committee, they're meeting in that process as I watched last night, so, you know, they will, they will do their thing and then they'll present a presentation to the select board and advisory as we work that schedule out, so.
So we're going to do a joint meeting like we did last year? Is that what you're talking about?
Which one?
We did a joint kind of, yeah, school committee, advisory, select board.
At the end of the process, this is the kickoff.
Okay.
It won't be a joint meeting for individual budgets. They'll, they meet separate from you folks, so I'll likely be doing Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday. They take a different look than you guys do, and have to ask slightly different questions, so we'll be doing, I think it's, I think it's easier for me and our staff if we do that. Well, the staff would probably like to do it all in one night, but it works. That process, and then we'll do a, at the end, we'll do a, before town meeting, before we publish the final law. So, that's all I have this evening. Please come next Wednesday if you want, and if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
Can you send this presentation to us?
Absolutely, I'll post it online.
Yep.
And anybody who wants it, drop the staff an email, we can email it to you too if you want, but if it's online, just download it, you know, it will show you what's going on there, so. Any questions from the board? Obviously, you're going to see more detail than this as we go through it, but if you have...
And we'll have the department heads come out each...
Yep.
All right.
So, any questions from advisory? You folks are still in the meeting, you haven't adjourned, right?
We didn't.
Okay, okay, so don't ask, don't ask questions. So, audience, if you have questions potentially?
Hello, I just had a quick question about grant writing. I know you mentioned that that was a position that you'd, you know, having help would be beneficial, so I was just wondering, is there any, I don't know if this would be possible, but to have like a committee or something that, like volunteers that help with the grant writing process?
We have some.
Because I know that, I feel like there's community members who would be interested in helping.
I'm not sure that a committee process would...
Would work, right, because there's follow-up.
Too specialized, like the grant I talked about earlier, we met today, an engineer, myself, Serpent and the two chiefs, as a kickoff to that, and it's so specialized that you have to have somebody else. They're going to, we're paying them to write it. We talked about, today, we were about to, ironically, the calls here, we're about to go before the, because the commission on several NOIs for improvements to our beaches and boatwires, and filing the paperwork with the DPP is a good question, too. We have those quotes, but we're actually going to be paying an engineer to help us with those filings, so, really need to do that. We have everything lined up, let's just do it and make it easier for everybody, so. One thing I did want to say, I talked about we're going to mitigate facilities, and some of the other things, I know we've done this with public safety projects and public safety programs, we are working with Mass Maritime to have interns come to the town through an intern program. I have also talked to a bit about a state, but it's not, no formalized agreements there. We will have a facilities intern in our office this summer. My goal is something that I've tried to do for many, many, many years, and we've done, we've done an okay job with it, but I want really good detail. Every single system, every single window, every single stairway, carpet, flooring, I want in every one of our buildings even toward 100%, and then I want to put a useful, remaining useful life in a projected cost in a year that has to be replaced. It gives you, we've done it, but we've done it in a room-enterer way. It gives you such a huge tool for capital planning. If you had a facilities director, they'd be doing that. We're going to use an intern to do that. So, those guys are great, we've used their interns on the public safety side, I've used their interns on facilities and some of the engineering fields that they've had in the past and other jobs. It's a way to get work done specifically, specific projects such as I've talked about here, at a very, very low cost.
For another potential win-win, I know, obviously, the school committee, the schools are, you know, expanding their pathways program, what about interns helps the town and helps...
We actually already just took care of that, so...
Yeah, we've, we're working, we're...
Mary Ellen and I and Sabrina have already talked...
I gave a thumbs up to that.
Yep.
But we know, we want to execute that now.
Yes, so they actually are talking right now.
Yeah, we're talking about making that happen.
And we're looking at taking three, yeah, we might be taking three in town hall, which would be fabulous.
Yeah, I mean, we've had good luck in the past with that program, well, I don't know if it was Pathways, but it was a similar intern program with the schools. We're definitely going to...
It actually happened this morning.
Incorporate that, potentially, you know, some other things with our, with our school system, you know, we're working with that, and then, obviously, interns where we can get major projects completed, where you need that a little bit advanced knowledge. It's going to work, we're going to make it work, we're going to fill those voids and move forward.
Another thing we talked about, because the grant committee thing didn't seem like it would work out, and we wouldn't be able to do it now, but to try to share a grant writer with another town, like we do our ACO.
We've actually explored that, and most of those towns either don't want to share or don't have a grant writer.
Last I heard, Plimpton might have been a possibility.
I talked to him.
Did you?
I talked to him, and it was a possibility, it's just, we just never formalized it.
Oh, okay.
Does it need to be formalized?
Right.
We're going to call him, going to reach back out, so we'll see.
Who did you talk to over there?
Tell me, the town administrator.
Administrator.
What is his name?
No, I don't need his name, I was just curious.
I'm bad with names, but, we talked about it probably back in October, so.
What about other opportunities for, are there, are we vigorously exploring opportunities for other shared resources?
Yes.
Positions?
Yes.
What other ones?
Absolutely. Well, I don't want to talk about one because the other community asked me to keep it kind of quiet, but, you know, obviously, facilities, obviously, IT, I've talked to the schools about sharing some of that. The problem with school and town IT is, as Erin would say, and I'm going to screw this up since she's going to kill me, we are information technology, they are IT, 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 education? No, that's not an I, I don't know, but their IT is education-based, our IT is mostly financial-based. You know, we're computer and financial-based. The two don't really mesh well, not even the products that are being used, you know, MacBooks and Chromebooks versus pretty much tablets and, they do use tablets in schools, I shouldn't say that, but tablets and Windows computers here, so. We've taken steps on our server structure to mitigate costs there and update our products. It's funny because 30 years ago, now I'm giving away my age, 30 years ago, you used to have the big mainframes in city and town halls, and you know, we had one big box one and everything with all kinds of backups and the old tapes that used to slam in and backup, and then you went to the individual servers where you had 10 servers in a rack, or 10 servers stacked up, and now we're back to that big box with the virtual, running virtual servers. They're still running 10 servers, but it's running all in one big box, so.
What about the cloud? A lot of institutions are moving to the cloud, they're more secure, might help.
So we, we have moved to the cloud, we have moved, we have moved to the cloud with many of our products and are about to move to the cloud and eliminate another server within town hall. So, yes, the cloud is certainly a place for going, but there's still certain things that you legally have to have within your building, but yes, we're using the cloud, 100%. So.
It's not a financial thing, really, but if, if, why don't we post for the ADA coordinator position?
It's five hours.
I know, but it's five hours you're absorbing.
Yeah, but it's...
The Commission on Disabilities used to take responsibility for that.
Right.
Well, but they had a coordinator.
Yeah, it was Brandon Goleman, our grant writer, he was also...
No, we had somebody else.
Brandon was our AD coordinator for a while.
We had somebody at the old rec center, what was his name?
Regardless, just a thought.
I forget their name, but, yeah, we, there's a lot of things we could be posting for that I'm just...
I just hate to see you absorb something you don't have to.
I understand, I understand, but there is a budget constraint, and I'm not absorbing 100% of these, as I said. Thank you to the wonderful staff we have here, that are here that are doing a lot of this work, so.
Right. Did you have something else, Katrina?
Yeah, I was just going to say with the whole quality planning council, grants, is there any way to...
We use them, we use them for our green communities.
Yeah, we're using them for grants.
And you do have to pay them.
You do, yeah, there's a cost.
Yep.
The advantage to green communities is, we pay them, but we pay them a grant money. That's why we use them for that, so. There's a component of that grant that covers that cost. Any other questions?
If I may, very quickly, the Bay Area Health voted last week to submit an article for the warrant to ask the townspeople to cease adding fluoride to the water. In speaking with Dan Sullivan, my understanding is that there is a fluoride cost that comes from the Water Enterprise Fund, so in the topic of cutting costs, I wanted to bring that to, you know, further discussion, thank you.
And it needs to get forwarded to the warrant, and one note on that, that does make you ineligible for several federal grants for water, so, just want to make sure we understand. Makes you ineligible for several federal grants, and we're not anticipating on a lot of them, but we like to, and I'm applying to anticipate a lot of water and such a cost come up. So, we need to mitigate that and understand that. I'll do a little more research, this is coming from several years ago, so.
This is your preliminary budget?
Yes.
So there's more to speak about.
Absolutely.
Line by line.
Does anybody have any other questions? Would that conclude your town manager's report, or do you have more?
Oh, no, I have much, well, not much.
Okay.
A couple of things, the flu, I think I told you that they did test positive, so we know that, that's actually out there. Go to our website, follow the recommendations, if you see deceased fowl, barfowl, or any bird, or any animal. Keep in mind that felines such as fisher cats, home cats, bobcats, we don't have many in Massachusetts anymore, what's the other big cat we have? Fox. Yeah, fox is a cat.
Fox is a cat.
Are all very susceptible to this, and if they eat a dead bird, they will catch the flu and if they die. So, keep your pets away, if you see other animals, just yell at them, bang a couple pans, they don't like that, they'll run, they may come back, but, so do what we can, follow the guidelines on the website. If you see a massive quantity of birds, make sure you contact us, there's a form on our website, or give us a call. Second thing is, now I lost it, oh, this is terrible. I'll have to update, I don't remember what it was now, and I forgot to write it down, so, I apologize.
Okay. I'll be back to you.
That's it, that's all I have, so.
Do we have any liaison updates tonight? Any old business?
Yeah, website updates, I just want to thank the select board and the departments for updating the website, there's some things, you know, I emailed them out and they got those updated, which is great, keeping the website updated, et cetera, there's been some reorganization of some things that are more organized, which is better as well. One thing, is there, is there a way to make the, if you go, if you go on the website, you have to kind of dig a little bit to get to the master plan, and the master plan is a really great document, not just...
Tell me what you want.
All right. Can we make it easier to get to? Discover Pembroke, master plan.
Yeah.
Great, that's all, that's the ask.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from our guests? Come on up. Could we pass the mic? Thank you. Please, Mike, thank you. Please, thank you. Hi.
So, I went to the bylaw committee...
Sorry, can you just...
Rob Dugan?
In your street.
Philip's Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I sent everybody here a letter last week in regards to the bylaw committee. So the bylaw committee, the sixth thing that was on the agenda, was to bring back single-use plastic bags to our town. And to give a little background, five years ago, hundreds of people worked on this, including standing in front of grocery stores, getting all the signatures for the special town meeting. The Northern Salt River Watershed Association donated like 300 bags, other people donated reusable bags. We gave those out, we gave them out at the town meeting, it passed five years ago. I don't know why it's coming back and it's rearing its head. There were only two people on that committee that were for it, nobody else spoke against it, there were many people in the audience that spoke against it. Two of their arguments, their only argument, really was convenience. One of the people said that they don't shop in Pembroke, they go to other towns, which I find mind-boggling, they're actually looking up towns that have plastic bags, not going to our merchants, and they're buying things from other towns that have plastic bags. I don't understand that mentality. The other person's argument was, there's already plastics in products in the store, why not have more bad stuff? Like, put the plastic products in the plastic bags. That's not even logical, if you think about it. Did everyone get a chance to read my letter, first of all?
Yes.
So, the numbers are astounding. I mean, we could be putting 10 million bags into the environment every year, and if you don't care about the environment, that's fine, now it's, it's a dollar issue, and you just went through the budget. There's no way that the recycle bill is going to go down if we're pumping 10 million bags back into the system.
I'm going to interrupt. Do not put your plastic bags in the recycle system. It creates a rope through the automated machines, which injures people and costs the town huge money.
Costs a lot of money. It's going to cost money anyways to get in the landfill, because it's a volume issue, it's a weight issue, and they're not going to give it to us free out of the goodness of their heart. Right now, we're not paying for them, and we've gone five years without them. I urge you not to bring this thing back. I don't know exactly how the system works, I assume that you vote to put this article on the warrant?
Yes.
Or do you have the power to not put it on?
So, we do, so the bylaw committee, did you want to speak?
I was just going to talk process.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
So, let's talk process, if you've emailed me, you've likely got a response, if you sent me a letter, you haven't got a response, I've been very busy with budget process. The process is, the bylaw review committee will bring the articles to the warrant, the warrant will then be...
To the selectmen.
To the selectmen. The selectmen will, will vote to put them on a warrant or remove them from the warrant, and they can do that. One caveat, because I've heard some rumors, is if there's a citizen petition, they can't remove them from the warrant legally.
Right, but right now, we're talking about the bylaw committee bringing it to us.
So, so process, it'll go to them, I strongly recommend anybody who is for or against this, attend the meeting where they're going to be discussing the warrants. It'll be posted on the agenda, come to the meeting and talk. After that, the advisory committee, those folks back there, will then hear those warrant articles, that'll also be posted on their agenda, go to their meeting and tell them how you feel. After that, they have to make a recommendation to town meeting, if it gets there, and it warrants, the article goes to town meeting, go to town meeting and vote. Participate in the process and make sure you get the right result, and I strongly recommend, this is what I'm telling, anybody who's emailed me likely got that response, if you sent me a letter, you'll probably get that response, but maybe not after this discussion, we'll see how much time I have, but follow that process. Come here, talk to the select board when they're discussing it, go to advisory and talk to them, you have input.
And if it makes its way to...
Go to town meeting and vote.
Okay.
I recommend you go to town meeting anyway, but, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it seems like we have more work to do. I just don't know what the argument is for the other side. Ruin the environment, make my trash bill go up. I don't, I don't get it, I'm not really sure what the argument is.
I understand.
Anybody want to make the argument?
Thank you. Did you have something? Oh, did you have something? Dan?
No.
Oh, come on up, Katrina.
Katrina, Winter Green Farm Road, didn't say it before, sorry. Just a question, I know you said that there is, you could have a petition, can you have a petition to keep the current law, or does that not work?
Would it be superfluous to have...
I would say, I would say legally, you could have a petition to keep the same law, to keep the law. I don't think, it just makes it cumbersome for legal, for this board, for advisory, and for town meeting.
It's almost, what's the difference? Why would you just fight the one?
Yeah.
I don't know, I was just checking.
If someone's proposing to make it go away, just use that one as your argument to keep it.
Got it. I also wanted to mention that there's potential health concerns, you know, I was looking at the water testing from the past 20 years, and PFAS in the past, since 2021, they've been steadily going down, and the ban was started in terms of being implemented in 2019, so if our PFAS numbers, which I saw one study that said, plastic bags can have, you know, about 53% in one study, had PFAS chemicals in them, then that means the ban was working in terms of health, like the quality of our water, the PFAS chemicals were going down, trending down since 2021, so I worry about the implications for our water if we were to reverse that ban, since that was the only change that I'm aware of, that would have affected the PFAS chemicals from going down, so, just wanted to name that, happy to share the graph. I think I actually did, so you already have it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nicole, come on up. No, come on up. Hi, could you just identify yourself?
Yep, Nicole Pelletier, 233 West Elm Street, I just want to speak to the PFAS, I'm not an expert, but from what I understand, when there is a significant drawdown on water during a water ban, that is when PFAS levels go up, so it's more or less people with maybe irrigation systems that are, you know, like just improper taps into the water system that cause that significant drawdown that can cause that issue, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Nicole.
And I just want to note, all of what they're saying is accurate, but our PFAS numbers in Pembroke are so low that we don't even trigger anything, it just, you know, that's a good thing, folks, that's a very good thing, and we want to keep them low, so.
Anyone else? Come on up.
We had a presentation for the green communities after people recently, or last summer, something like that. Would this affect...
Wait, could you just identify yourself?
Eileen Flash, School Street. Yeah, no, that's fine. Would this affect how they would see us?
No. Yeah, they don't, they don't deal with that so much, they're looking at energy and the bags wouldn't, so.
Are there any grants that you know of that would be affected by this?
Well, certainly RDP numbers wouldn't be, wouldn't help that process.
Are what numbers?
Recycling dividend program. So, the recycling dividend program gives us funds, and the governor's already reducing where we're going with those, and because of changes that the governor made, our RDP number is dropping this year slightly, it would definitely affect, it could potentially affect that. We want to have the highest possible RDP number, so we get the most money.
Because it's like a point system?
Correct.
And so by going back to those bags, that would decrease our points?
Could potentially affect that, yep.
Right.
Phil, I don't know, I couldn't hear that full explanation, did you just affirmatively or negatively say you anticipate effects of grants funding?
So, the recycling dividend program is a program based upon a recycling dividend number that we obtain via actions that we take. You know, the fact that we use curbside recycling and we get the tonnage out of our trash is one, you know, there's a whole list of things, we want to make sure we get the maximum number for our RDP credits, so we get the maximum grant amount, because the number that we obtain is tied directly to that grant amount.
Sorry for coming up so many times, but the other thing, I looked up in terms of what bills were in the House and the Senate, and there were six bills that were talking about single-use plastic bans, and I'm sure one of them will pass, so I would hate for us as a town to change a law and then give the businesses in town whiplash, because it then changes at the state level, so, I just wanted to name that.
Thank you. Come on up.
So, there's a lot of people that are very interested in this, but it hasn't been presented to us, so it's difficult for me to make a decision to give you an informed opinion on it if it hasn't been presented to me.
I know, we're not making a decision on anything tonight.
Something else, but not exactly that.
All right.
I would make the request that when you have a public hearing of these committees, maybe we should record those? It's a public thing, it's good to be able to know what's being said. Had you witnessed that, you would probably have been a little bit ashamed. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wish we had that capacity. We have to give up something that we're recording now to actually record. Well, unless, well, unless we do it ourselves, yeah.
Anybody else before we move on? Okay. I think that's everything. So, upcoming issues, February 10th, special within the annual warrant opens, on February 14th at 12:00 PM, all warrants close, April 23rd, all warrants are signed for posting on April 29th, 2025, and on May 13th at 7:00 PM, our annual town meeting will take place. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.